Hi John, this is just a sound check.
Yep, all good from my end.
Right there, if you wanted to be able to... So we put this...
Hi John, this is just a sound check.
Um.
Yep, all good from my end. A seniors moment.
All the main to order for our committee, standing committee, Tuesday, December 12th. Attendance, it looks like everyone but Council Jolly, she said she sent me a message, she probably would be a bit late. Uh, Council Hughes and Vermont's here online, so that's out of seven. Council Mackay, do you want to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Sure, that the December 12th, 2023 agenda be adopted as presented.
Alright, all those in favor? Assuming that's unanimous, yeah. Alright.
He gets two votes. I just took it away.
Um, so we have quite a few registered speakers today. I'm blessed, I see that you guys are all set up and ready to go, Tony and Kevin. We've got Scott from Stantec, Scott with us?
Yes.
Presenting.
The neighborhood plans, the ASP itself.
Okay, I'm actually gonna go to my other list. Sorry. And then we have, uh, this is a different list. Lillian Parker's not presenting, I've got Kevin, obviously Kevin Jones is still here. He was here last week for the different topic, back here again for soccer. And then Jeff Cook of Wind Dance Properties, is Jeff with us?
There he is up there.
Jeff is online, okay, thank you, so we can start there. I will, I will go first obviously to bless because they're all set up, ready to go. You guys have something like a PowerPoint to share?
Yep.
Alright. So thanks for joining us guys and being prepared, I have all the emails from Kevin ready to like refer to when we get to this, but you can start whenever you're ready, you guys have five minutes.
Well, thank you, I'm gonna be the lead off and then Kevin's gonna take off when I stumble in the middle. Um, the first thing that we wanted to talk about was some of the meetings that we've had with the other stakeholders involved. And that was actually the direction that we got from council was to try and, after their last presentation. We've had a really good contact with Council Anack at the City of Edmonton. And he said, he's very busy at the moment, but he said he's gonna get back to us shortly and he's passed on our inquiries to the other City of Edmonton staff. We've also contacted some of the City of Edmonton planners and an engineer who are working on the Starling neighborhood. Uh, the main thing that we've been discussing is this, um, uh, planned, uh, realignment of 137th Avenue. We're actually suggesting a modification to it, beyond our second slide here, I think. Uh, yes, we're suggesting that if the traffic circle that they got in their plans is moved to the east, it means that the whole southeast quadrant of, um, the future Lois Hole Park is protected. And it would mean that Leclerc Way will run down the property line between the provinces parcel and the, actually, the Wind Dancer parcel, uh. Um. Uh, we've shown that to all the people at the city and they're now looking at it and they're gonna get back to us on it. Uh, with the provincial planners, we actually had a really good meeting then for two hours, with six of them. And, uh, we showed them those previous, uh, pla- plans. They were quite interested and they obviously support us trying to protect the southeast corner of the park. We did show them the area structure plan, uh, and the latest version of it, they were actually kind of surprised to see it. They said, where did you get this from, from, mainly to us? So we've, we've provided that to them, uh, that'll be coming up now, shortly. Um, we also have had a meeting, uh, it was just the following day that we were asked to give a presentation to the council uh, of Parkland. Um, they were quite, also quite supportive of what we're doing. And, um, uh, Councilor Killig particularly out there, not Councilor Killig, sorry.
Two K's.
Councilor Kowalski, it begins with a K, right? Kowalski, he's really an advocate for more dialogue with all of the communities. Similarly, Kevin and I went to a meeting in Sturgeon County of some residents who, uh, are quite concerned about pollution getting into the, their, their stretch of the Sturgeon River. Um, that meeting was attended by the, the mayor of, um, Sturgeon, uh, Alana Anatu. Um, again, they were really in, in favor of having more dialogue with the other jurisdictions around the lake and everybody working together to preserve Big Lake. Um, we've also been in ongoing discussions with the landowners. The particularly, uh, Wind Dancer Properties and also Rohit, of course, with regards to this, uh, uh, Wind Dancer of subsequent to our discussions with them, I think they were scheduled to have a meeting with the provinces planners themselves. We'd kind of put them in touch with each other. With regards to the City of St. Albert, um, we actually got a very helpful communication from Tracy, uh, back on the 27th of November. And I'll, I'll quote some of the things that we think we heard from your email. You did confirm that if that roundabout is moved, um, then it's quite probable that the NSP or, and maybe even the ASP could be moved accordingly if the city decides to move the roundabout that I showed you to the east, so that's the alignment for Leclerc Way, and that could be made if the, uh, the, the City of Edmonton does make that change to their plans. You know, I think you also confirmed that there was gonna be a 50 meter setback of environmental reserve down the Garrett Creek. But only, but it's only gonna happen if a valid environmental report isn't prepared to say something different. So that designation of a possible 50 meter strip of environmental reserve uh, could be changed if there's a, a report recommending something, something different. That's, that's what we took from your, your email. Um, we were really pleased that you said that there's gonna be stormwater management late, does that mean that I reckon?
Second sip.
Oh. And then I'll pass it. Uh, so, the other thing that you'd mentioned was that there would be, the Red Willow Park West Plan will, uh, be implemented in terms of the trails along the lake shoreline. I don't know whether we've got that plan, have we, Kevin?
I'll pull it up as soon as we.
Takes a while. So this is causing.
Okay. It's committee. We're a lot more relaxed here.
Anyway, those plans, actually, I think we should, can't get it here. If you look at those Red Willow Park West plans, the, what is proposed for uh, the north side of the lake, um, I think it'll come up in a minute. Um, is very much in accord with what we've been asking for. The idea that there'll be lakes, parks, natural area and that the whole lake shore will be preserved. So we're really pleased to see that those plans that you can see on there still likely to be implemented, at least the concepts that are on there. Now I'll turn over to Kevin.
Yeah, well, when, when, when it comes up, I'll take you to the next map. But one of the uh items that we have some suggestions for is currently in the Lakeview Business District in the sort of the northwest quadrant is where the it's designated as a community parks. And it would be sort of a, like a gateway to the, uh, to the city. And what we're thinking is that wouldn't it maybe be better if those parks were located south of Meadow View Drive and then it's a real gateway and it's a real lake view for it is, you know, Lakeview Business District. So it'd be nice to have that park emphasize that, that name. We'd be very complimentary and would serve as a beautiful gateway and entrance to the city from, from that direction um for visitors and, and for residents. And having a park there, I, I think it would have, you know, just better logistics, better parking, better access for, for visitors and for citizens to use that area. I think you get much better value per dollar, you know, to municipal ac- asset. It's an ecological asset. When you invest money, you want to get maximum usage out of that asset. So I, I think, we think that would be a, a, a good location for that, that 10% municipal reserve component. And the, I think the other thing too is, you know, we've talked about this before, it is, is about maintaining that area south of Meadow View Drive as, as a key ecological connector between both provincial park, Green Nuns, the Red Willow Park system. And our meetings with the City of Edmonton and the uh County of Parkland, they're really focused on on ecological continuity and then, you know, maintaining that, that connection for wildlife, for genetics, for, for everything. And so, um, we just wanted to, to kind of emphasize that once again. So uh, just the last item to finish up with is, um, you know, with all the, the, the visiting that we've done with, with nearby stakeholders. Well, we talked to people in the park almost every day. There's, you know, some, one of us out, out there. And, and we think it would be important for continued dialogue on the area structure plan west. I think people aren't as familiar with what's going on as, as they'd like to be. Um, maybe they don't know where to, where and how to find the information. So I think we have to work on that. Um, so we think there should be a new round of, of public meetings prior to the ASP being submitted for, for first reading. And that should include an in-person open house where public and stakeholders can, can review, um, the entire document and any accompanying reports and formally submit their comments. Well, that's from us and any comments and or any follow-up you'd like us to do. I know last time you, you kind of charged us with, hey, go out and talk to people. And, and so we did that. So you know, we, we really value that kind of feedback from.
Couple of questions for me, um, right back to the dialogue part of it. When you're meeting um with residents out in the park, are you directing them over to our cultivate the conversation page?
Oh yeah, um, definitely. In fact, the, like the people at the province particularly asked if they could have the contact with the City of St. Albert. We obviously said that this, this is, we said that this is the page where we got the plan that we're showing you, but we also sent them Tracy's uh connection. We, they also asked for a connection with Rohit. We sent that connection to them as well. So we are definitely trying to encourage everybody involved to be talking to the right people, I guess.
And when we get to business arising, well, this conversation, we'll probably ask our staff about next steps on public engagement and stuff. And then my other question was, um, so you're, you're suggesting that some of the green space along Care Creek be removed and moved down to south of Meadow View, correct?
That would be our suggestion. I mean, my experience of doing area structure plans, usually public parks are at a location in the, somewhere near the middle of the neighborhood where they can be accessed by all of the people. So I did find it rather strange that that particular park is being located in the very northwest corner of it. Furthest away from the main entrance into the, the area, which is going to come from the, the southeast corner.
I mean, I'll ask when we get over here. How much is MR and how much is environmental reserve and the protection of the creek and the setbacks, et cetera? But just, just making sure that I understood that. Ken also had a question.
We'll be very interested to hear the.
Exactly, yeah.
I have a question. Um, when you were doing all of your consultations, in particular with the province, did you, um, you have any conversation uh and even with Parkland County about that interpretive center that they're supposedly kind of been waiting for? I mean, or did they not know about it either?
Be honest with you, we, we particularly didn't mention it because we think it is a political issue where obviously St. Albert would hope that the environmental learning center is going to be on in St. Albert, and that is what the Parks Department are planning.
Yeah.
Uh, County of Parkland would rather like it to be down there. So we did, when we were making a presentation to them, we particularly didn't have that item.
Okay. No, I was just curious because I mean, I mean, as you, you're aware, we've been waiting for the province to come back to the table in relation to that.
We are pushing for that environmental center. We've asked for it to be funded. And the obvious place to put it frankly is in that parcel that we're trying to preserve integrity of.
The, um, you know, Alberta Park said that their, their facilities on west just isn't large enough to accommodate a environmental learning center and I, I think it's a foregone conclusion that'll be on the, on the east and close to St. Albert. My, my gut sort of tells me that Parkland recognizes that, but doesn't want to, you know, necessarily. So yeah.
All right, good. Thanks. I was just curious in relation to your conversations and I appreciate it because I, I think I was one that asked if you could continue to reach out network and I, I appreciate the follow-up and I appreciate the information. Thank you.
So jumping back to the province still acknowledges their responsibility to build that interpretive center? When you were talking to them?
The, the environmental learning center is a key element of their parks management plan. Um, and they even outline what's going to be and specify a location in what they call the east facility zone, which is in St. Albert. So I, I, they're, they're not backing away from doing that at all. In fact, we, we brought up the possibility that if they talk to the adjacent landowner, which is Wind Dancer Properties, and I think Jeff is possibly chewed into this, that there is, and they work together, it's possible that there could be a solution with that learning center that it also becomes a, a feature for the development that Wind Dancer's planning to do in their area immediately to the east. Again, communication on this is the key thing to it. If you get all of the parties around there and working on it, then there is a solution that's great for everybody.
One thing that was interesting that Parks told us is that, that I, I was asking, you know, what, what, what do you plan to have in the environmental learning center? What kind of theme might you have given its location to St. Albert Edmonton, a massive urban area? And they said it would definitely be focused on, on urban parks and integrating um, urban life with, you know, with natural areas. And so we put a, a focus on that and being proximate to, you know, hundreds of schools and tens of thousands of kids. Uh, it's, it's just a, an amazing opportunity. So um, I think a, a pretty big large amount of political pressure would need to be put on the provincial government to get that funding. The provincial government right now is, they're more focused on, on shoring up the infrastructure deficit with their provincial park system. Um, but I think Edmonton is, is owed a decent provincial park. Calgary has, you know, has their urban provincial park and, and Edmonton doesn't. So I think, I think a strong case could be built and I think the city could be a huge part of that.
So Kevin or Tony, could, could you put back up the, the map that you had and just clarify where the potential site for the um, learning center is, is proposed to go? And um, just to outline where the kind of provincial boundary is of, of what their park spaces? And, and, and it might be helpful to share your slides with council afterwards as well.
Yeah.
Um, we keep getting a message saying poor connection. I think so. Apologies.
That's okay.
Oh. If you go to number three there, Kevin.
And, and just again, a clarification around the road alignment and traffic circle.
This is the, the key document that we provided to both the arts department and to the City of Edmonton. And you can see where the possible learning center would be on the west side of Leclerc Way. Again, we feel that if uh, actually further north than that, about there. Yeah, that's right. And um, if the road is actually running down the joint property line of those two developers, it really facilitates the possibility that that learning center will go there. And that learning center isn't going to go there until that road is built. So again, we would argue that by just adjusting the traffic circle to the east, it's facilitating the learning center as well, frankly. Having that road come down the property line rather than going across what is actually a very important piece of protected area facilitates all kinds of things going on there that benefit both developers, even benefits Starling. We've got residents that are members of Starling, that are members of Bless, that are lobbying very hard for this because they don't want that piece of natural area to be destroyed. So.
So there, there was also talk of one of the uh creeks, uh, not quite sure it's actually a creek, but there was concerns that that's a environmentally sensitive area.
Um, in, in this case, there is actually a creek there. It's, uh, what is it? The Horseshoe Creek runs right through there. And again, that's going to be protected. If not, it runs right underneath where a major embankment would have to be built. But it crosses 137th Avenue just um, west of the traffic circle that we're proposing be built. So by putting the traffic circle to the east there, we're actually protecting that creek.
Well.
But the other creek that we mentioned is Carrot Creek.
No, I was, I was like, no, I was thinking about the, the, not Carrot Creek up north, but the horse or shoe or horse, whatever it is.
The people that we're talking to at the City of Edmonton are actually the same people that did the open space that runs through Starling. And what we did realize in talking to them is that if you move it way that we've got it, it actually makes there being a possible connection between the wildlife corridor that comes up in Starling, following that creek and the southeast corner of uh, the park, right? And that isn't really possible if you continue to have the line going across the way it, it would go if the traffic circle was put where they're planning to put it. So.
And that traffic circle um is in City of Edmonton land? Or St. Albert land or shared?
Boundary of City of Edmonton.
Yep.
The diversion that they're planning to make is this, and they are planning to come up to here and put a traffic circle. What we're asking for is that if they put future traffic circle, and it won't have to be built at this time, it'll only be built in this road is built, which by 10 years from now.
Yep.
But if they move.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Then it means that there, instead of the road going across here in the future, it will go up like that. To preserve this whole area of, of the creek, which runs down here. It goes down there. The natural area in Starling comes up like this. And it makes even the possibility, even a wildlife corridor and then.
So that's that. Yeah, that had me confused because it says in that big box, bless alternative, you know, the B, and then there's an arrow that points to the traffic circle that's more east. That's not what you want. You want it more. You're sorry, more west. You want it more.
Drawing that shows what we're planning and we did though. There's actually a natural area that comes up to about here that follows the creek.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's possible. I mean, and this isn't, wouldn't be in St. Albert's responsibility. But it's possible that there could be actually a wildlife corridor linking this one with the park. But that's only really possible if the traffic circle is here and the road runs like this.
Right. The City of Edmonton actually won a, they won a planning award for that environmental corridor that runs, runs through that, those neighborhoods.
We had a, a former member, Grant Purcell, who was the instrumental from the City of, well, we'll remember him. He was working for the City of Edmonton for 20 years and was the, the main guy that got the wildlife corridor built under Winterburn Road and so forth.
Okay, thanks. That's a good clarification. I think there's a little bit of confusion as to which version we were talking about here.
Council Hughes or Vermont's, any questions? You're good? All right. Stick around YouTube because I'm sure we'll have questions for these, this side of the room. Next on my speaker list, why don't we get, um, Kevin?
Or Jeff. Jeff, let me see if he's speaking.
Yeah.
He's speaking on this, right?
I don't think he's next, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I just go in order. Yes, he is. They're all speaking on West, they're research, but okay. Yeah, Kevin, why don't you come on up? Who's, are you both speaking? Let's start next, although he's not speaking.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then Kevin. It's okay.
He won. No, he doesn't need this voice in our.
You know.
Sorry. I just thought we were talking about. Yes.
Yeah, exactly. He's sitting there reading. I hope you two have a PowerPoint and drawings.
Some drawings, some drawings. Uh, good morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, my name is Kevin Jones. I'm the current president of the St. Albert Soccer Association. Um, I've been involved with the association for, I'm shocked when I actually counted.
For what?
Thirty-nine, for 39 years. No.
Okay.
No, this is just here if we need.
But introducing this?
Yeah, yeah. I was getting there. I was getting there. I was still introducing myself, Kathy. So joining me today, thank you Kathy for the segue, Chris Pudel, the executive director of the association. Um, so why, yeah, I'm the St. Albert Soccer Association is the largest recreational um, organization within the, within the city. Um, we have an annual membership of over 5,500 people. Um, we have served this community, started out as a boxing and sporting club, the Hercules Soccer, or the Hercules Association, six to eight years ago. And we have evolved into uh the St. Albert Soccer Association. Um, currently we have six uh full-time employees and an operating budget just short of $2 million. So uh, we're a busy place around the, around the community. Um, in the last few years, uh, the St. Albert Soccer Association has become a national youth uh, gained a national youth club license. What that is, is it's a review by the Canadian Soccer Association to make sure that we meet certain standards so our members can trust us um there and have confidence in our organization. That process continues annually to make sure we maintain our standings. Um, we've also gained participation in the, in the NYCL or the, and the AYSL League, which is the Albert Youth uh Soccer League, which is the highest. which is the Alberta Youth Soccer League, which is the highest form uh, or level of soccer for the province. So what that affords us and helps our community by bringing teams from uh, Calgary and Southern Alberta to play in St. Albert on a regular scheduled basis for youth games. So it's like we also competed in UWS. I usually get those two letters flipped, so I got it right this time. Um, the the United Women's Soccer Pro-Am, legal across North America. We participated in that for two years. Um, but the Alberta Soccer Association has decided um to start a semi-pro league um across the province. And so we have spots in both the male and female side of that. So um, the implications for that is um, there is an annual Canada Cup and so um, what that affords us the opportunity to participate in that and it's a random draw. So you could see Vancouver Whitecaps, Toronto FC arrive here to play our teams if we are the winners of the leagues. Um, so each of the provincial leagues would have an entrance into that cup and we would be drawn to do that. Does that sound far-fetched? We were in the final in both the male and female this season um and lost in penalties in the females in the shootout. Yeah, so. Um, so SAS is now a stage where it can offer opportunities uh to players and a place for all um, in all age groups and across our community. Um, we're a leader in football across the province and across the country. We have uh, members that sit on national boards uh and discipline committees across with the CSA. So why SAS is here today? Um, our members need are now pressing for space. Um, so we, we have a number of needs around that have caused us to cap programs, meaning that uh, children that want to play soccer in our community can't um, because we don't have both of which it sounds strange to say enough grass um, because we don't have enough uh field space and enough indoor space. Um, so winter training, of course, we do, although maybe not so much this year, we could have stayed outside a little longer. Um, but we have um outdone uh the capacity we have within our facilities and within the city's facilities. Um, so we need to look to um expand the spaces available for our players. Um, we also realize that um with the changes in the weather patterns, um, certainly city fields can only be where we may have been able to play two games a day every day of the week. Given the drought conditions and the wear and tear that that puts on the fields, it really does affect the the maintenance of those and the, and the um, the availability um long term for them. So what what has SAS done? We've adapted. Um, once, before Service Place came online, um, we had to limit uh access to players for the indoor. Um, so we built a space in Rial. We leased the space there. Um, and that allowed us to expand our programs for indoor for, and then this is for training. Um, we planned two facilities. Uh, we've been working with city staff to build um, designs for outdoor spaces and creatively use other green spaces within the community. And we've been building international relationships with a, an international sporting partner to build a full-size facility and we are going to get that project done. All right. Is that my time?
Oh, is it? That's it, Seth.
Yeah.
Well, pretend Chris is now speaking.
Okay. Um, I only have, I only have two more slides. Um, so one of the things we're going to do is replace the Rial space lease. Um, and we've applied for the, or are in the process of applying through the um city facilities. Right?
Project.
The project application, to build a facility, a seven V seven facility on our land or on the land release um existing in Rial. So um, we're in the, in the process of that. And then with the addition of the pro-am's one, and it's interesting, it comes up that we're talking about uh bless and green space soccer fields are great use of uh green space. Um, so we've been working with the stadium land and then this is a project that we've been working on for seven years to build um, a full-size cover field. And what is just as important for our association is the grass and the seven soccer fields in that area plan. Um, we've, we've got international partners we're looking at and, you know, in terms of why we're here around the west um, regional structure plan, if we, if there's a space in there and this soccer is considered in that or within the Badger lands, if there's lands that can't be like our existing lands dug into, soccer is a great option for that so that it gives us spaces for the kids to play. And the last one, so we just, SAS wants to ensure that we're able to be inclusive as possible, a place for prospective members within our, within St. Albert. Um, and we do need facilities to do that. Um, when considering the design for us, our structure plan, SAS would greatly appreciate if our members' facility needs both indoor and outdoor were included and I wanted to highlight this picture. Um, that was at the Christine Sinclair's retirement game uh was on the national broadcast and there is the city of St. Albert in our. Thank you. Thank you for the time. Happy to answer any questions.
Council McKay, go ahead.
Yeah, and so Kevin, on that existing, so you you want to replace the existing Rial on the existing site?
No, and so the the seven V seven uh spaces would go um between us and the rugby club. And we would build um an extension, so the garage and the kitchen area would come down. We would build that on there for, and that would just, that's just a training facility.
Yeah, and but that doesn't have any impacts in relation to the cap and capping?
No, no, it would, it's
You wouldn't have to get?
Nope. Or we're
When you say training, it's like weight training?
No.
You know, but not?
Soccer, yeah, soccer training turf field.
It's everything.
Yeah, because it was basically existing, so like we showed on the one slide, it's called the PDC, which is actually a facility owned by the Hodgson Group that we've repurposed and put all that turf in. And then we just build that exact same facility, except larger in between us and rugby, which we had several conversations with rugby boat. They actually could use it as well. And we look to give them some of the time and still to extend their programming.
And that wouldn't, and so just to reconfirm, that wouldn't impact some of your existing building limitations that are there?
There is a water reservoir, but we have a way around that.
And then the stadium lands that you just mentioned are the ones on the south. Just off the Henday.
Yep.
That we've been talking about.
Yeah, we had memorandum of understanding of that for several years and that said, that's expired. Um, there were some challenges about getting road access um into the facility because of some of the transportation utility corridor. And so now um we're looking at in the west area structure plan.
That's where Edmonton is approved their, their off-ramp.
Yeah.
From Henday.
Yeah, so Edmonton is
Yeah.
It's in their budget to create an off-ramp off of Henday on the one thirty-seventh avenue.
Yeah.
That, that was my follow-up. Would that conflict with that stadium?
Yeah, so then we're, that's why we're looking for land
Ah.
Some, somewhere else.
Oh, it would it would destroy your plans?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
I, I think so. I'd have to see, I haven't seen the drawing, Ken, so I don't know for sure.
Yeah.
Because that would give you road access and it would, there's sewer and water that maybe the city
That was what was the memorandum of understanding. I think the city of Edmonton still has that land designated as recreation. Um, and the memorandum of understanding had that the city of St. Albert would then service that space. So.
Question? You're good?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Um. And this is more, you're, we, you're aware that we're building a rec center up in the northwest?
Yes.
Does not include the covered turf. Uh, but there was a subsequent motion from council to continue to follow up with that. But there is an outdoor field included with that facility. Is that of the right size? Do you know?
I, well, the full-size ones that they're proposing there would help a lot if they go through, but the layout, I don't know how it's going to include that for sure because of the BMX track and everything that's there.
Okay.
I don't know how many full-size eleven-side fields are actually designated for that area. That is the biggest need for sure.
Okay, I will ask that when we get to this questions of staff, just to make sure.
Good.
Okay. All right. Thanks, guys.
Awesome. Thank you.
Very close to you. Okay, next on my speaker list, I do have um Jeff Cook. I was president of Wind Dance Properties. Jeff, you're online with us? There you are. Thank you for joining and waiting. Uh, take it away whenever you're ready.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak this morning. My comments will be brief. I, I, and unfortunately, I might be able to be there with you this morning. Uh, I am the president of the Wind Dance Properties, the registered owner of the lands that neighbor on the east of the Loas Hole Provincial Park. And of course, are bordered on the south by one hundred and thirty-seventh avenue and on the east by Ray Given Drive. Our family has owned these lands since nineteen sixties and we've worked to maintain a good relationship with the city. Our lands do fall within the West ASP area and we are recently informed by outside parties of the administration's proposed changes to the West ASP land use concept that impact our lands. It was a complete surprise actually to us that the stormwater management facility that had been shown on the lands previously on the west are now moved onto our lands with no notification, justification, or consultation with us. This change will have a significant impact on the future use and development building of our lands. Uh, additionally, in on this is our understanding that options have been put forward for the future Leclerc Way extension that might have a significant impacts on the the developability of our lands as well. We did participate in the landlord consultations in twenty twenty-two on the West ASP concept and provided our input to administration at that time regarding stormwater management and transportation concerns. Now, changes have been made that adversely affect our lands without being brought to our attention. Today, we are really asking the city administration to arrange an in-person meeting between affected landowners. So ourselves in the province and administration with the goal of finding a resolution that will be satisfactory for all and will aid in the future development of the lands prosperity for all involved. Uh, we'd like to actually as well make the committee aware of our concerns today and in this matter, and hope that the city would recognize that communication is essential to working with collaboratively to resolve these concerns and for all those that are impacted by such changes. So that's all I had to mention this morning. I did want to bring this to everybody's attention. If there are any questions on our lands or such, I can try and answer them today. Uh, but at the same time, we can look forward to future opportunities to get together and discuss.
Thank you, Jeff. Can you just tell me again where your land is and what the borders are? I'm looking at a map, so I just want to see.
Our lands are the sixty acres that border the Loas Hole on the east side. We are just north of one hundred and thirty-seventh avenue and just to the west of Ray Givens.
Oh, so you own all of that and Leclerc goes right up to the middle?
Yes.
Okay. And the storm pond in the map that I'm looking at, which is from today's package, is just a little east of the Leclerc Way proposed alignment and you're saying it was on the, it was further west before?
It was previously on the west side, which was actually on provincial lands and in a, in a recent update that we have seen, it's been moved onto our lands.
Okay. All right, I can see that. Just making sure I have that understanding.
Hmm, yeah.
Any, uh, Council Bremaski, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Thank you for presenting today. Could you answer a question? It seems to me there was something mentioned back in time about a development of uh of housing in that corner. Is that, is that your company or is that not?
Uh, there hasn't been any uh speak of development at this point. We are looking at all opportunities. Uh, there is no residential, there is no commercial, there is no industrial at this standpoint or at this point in time. Uh, we are looking for opportunities in the best use of the land. And that is one thing that actually was brought forward at previous points when the industrial identification was put in on the lands. We were unsure of if that is the best use of the lands.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes.
You want a soccer facility?
So um, do you mind us asking what, what you are looking to do with your land?
It's not determined at this point in time. We do have to look at the market assessments and these are some of the items that were brought forward back in twenty twenty-two and actually previous to that that uh there are a number of opportunities that the lands could be used for and we just don't know at this point in time. We are going to once we have some clarity around what's happening with the West ASP and all the other aspects to this, including uh, the, the provincial park and other aspects to it, then we can look at it and move forward.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead, Council McKay.
Uh, thanks again, Mr. Cook. Is the uh, the alignment that's currently uh for Leclerc Way that's in the proposed West ASP? And then I'm not sure if you've had any discussions with Bless and their alternative um, would, uh, you're nodding, so have you had any discussions about maybe their proposed realignment with how that would impact your property?
I did have a meeting with Tony uh a little while ago and uh, and again, thank you, Tony, for your assistance on that and bringing some of these pieces to our attention. Uh, we, again, we do not know at this point in time because depending upon the type of development that could go on in there, we might not have a use for a road at all. And so depending upon what any type of levies or such that might be brought forward and put forward onto the lands, it might actually be making it detrimental to our, our development.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking, I mean, I mean, lots has to be discussed before that, but I mean, that would certainly move I would have to have a replacement of the stormwater facility anyways, so if, if it's there. Anyways, okay, thank you. I appreciate actually being able to put a, put a face to the Cook names there. Thanks.
Yeah.
Hmm, yes. Look forward to uh meeting you in person in the future.
Yeah, anytime. Okay. Um, I'm looking at my registered speakers list now. I feel like that's everyone. Am I correct? I've, I've got Scott. But he's speaking with the group and then my other ones are all Millennium Park. Is that correct? Okay, all right. So let's go on in the agenda now to, oh, Dennis. Yes, I need somebody to make a motion to for the minutes from November fourteenth.
Yep.
Staring at people.
Yeah.
Wes is making that one. If you see no errors or missions, you could vote.
I took you the voting away. Ken doesn't want to be voted today, however.
Okay, um, and then we're going to get right into uh five point one, which is the St. Albert West Area Structure Plan and Neighborhood Plan Update. Tracy, you're doing all the presenting?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, are you ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, so we will go into that and then I'll open it up to questions probably that arose from Bless the soccer and the wind dancing um wind dancer presentation. And any others you guys have. So go ahead, Tracy.
Right.
Take a coffee.
Um, good morning. My name is Tracy Suie. I'm a planner with the city of St. Albert. I'm also joined by Scott Holt, who's um representative from Santa Consulting and Christina and Adrian also from Honey. We're also joined by engineering utilities, environment and record parks for any questions that might happen. This presentation will be in two parts. The first part would be about the St. Albert West Area Structure Plan, sort of the structure of it. And then the next part will be about the land use concepts for Badger and Lakeview.
Perhaps sorry to interrupt Tracy. I just offered that the second part is a land discussion. Uh, and so I would ask if you've got those specific questions, please wait for that portion as opposed to uh to have that discussion.
Any of the, the city uses Badger or Lakeview, those.
Correct, yes, thank you. Would that be in camera? Correct?
Yes, we have a motion ready.
Yeah, that's what I missed.
Right, so that's okay. Starting with the St. Albert West Area Structure Plan. I'm putting maps here to remind us where St. Albert West is. It's on the west side of St. Albert. Um, three annexations, so all of the lands in the west. It's over a thousand hectares uh in the area. It's founded by Carrot Creek, Big Lake to the west, they give a drive to the east, one thirty-seven avenue to the south and agricultural lands to the north. So for the area structure plan document, it's broken down into eight different parts. Part one, two, and three is this introduction, site analysis and vision and principles. So these three sections provide a general background of the lands and what we envision for the area. I'm going to go through each of the parts later on in detail. Uh, parts four, five, and six are the policy sections. It would talk about how you would implement the vision and principles for St. Albert West. And then part seven and eight are the maps and the statistics to help us better understand the text and policies. And starting in part one introduction, we talk about the purpose of the area structure plan, the role of the St. Albert West ASP for the city, the planning and development framework. You can see, um, area structure plan is roughly in the middle of the whole planning and development framework. We also provide a summary of the community participation involved with the development of the ASP and information on how to navigate and interpret the ASP, specifically the policy sections. Part two is the site analysis. And we talk about the location of the St. Albert West lands, what the lands are, where they're bounded by, the history of the lands, the known pre-settlement information and settlement information, legal descriptions, private and public ownership in the lands. Site context, which makes up a bulk of the part two section. And there we provide descriptions of the natural features, designate a floodline, topography, geotechnical soil conditions, existing utility infrastructure above and below ground, drillways, ground field sites and confined feeding operations. So site context, talking about the existing conditions of the St. Albert West lands. We had two technical studies completed for the St. Albert West, which is the Agricultural Impact Assessment and Historic Resources Act of Application. And both of these studies are summarized in part two. Part three is our vision, which contains the principles as well that are unique to St. Albert West. Vision of St. Albert West is that it is a key growth area. It will significantly impact economic and Vision of St. Albert West is that it is a key growth area. It will significantly impact economic and employment diversification. It is an area where people can work, live, and recreate. It is a place for varied housing options and a viable and well-connected community. And there will be importance placed on the ecological integrity of Big Lake, Carrot Creek, Sturgeon River, and other natural features. That's our vision, and now we have uh continuation of part three being our principles. Principles are drawn from the vision, and we've come up with six principal topics identified for St. Albert West. First one is economic diversification, which is about how St. Albert West will significantly impact economic and employment diversification. Urban design, which is about how development in St. Albert will be built to meet standards, incorporating best practices, practices and innovative solutions. The environment, which is about Carrot Creek, Big Lake, and Sturgeon River and other natural features as valued city amenities and to be conservative. Culture and community services, which is about having inclusive programmable parks and public spaces integrated throughout St. Albert West. Transportation, which is about the networks being well-connected throughout St. Albert West and um connected for efficient and convenient travel. And finally, utility infrastructure, which is about how infrastructure will function in a environmentally and physically responsible manner. So our part three principles also translate to our area-wide policies for the St. Albert West area structure plan. Again, their economic diversification, urban design, environment, culture, and community services, transportation, and utility infrastructure. Area-wide policies are the policies that would apply to the entire St. Albert West, just outlined in the red. And so what we want to see are these pulse, are these principles being applied throughout the entire St. Albert West. While we have the area-wide policies, we also have the land use policies, which are specific to the land use designations that we see on the map here. There are five of them, which are neighborhoods, mixed-use employment areas, employment areas, major open spaces, and mixed-use areas. Going through one by one, neighborhoods are shown in the yellow, primarily in Shro and the northeast corner of the Makes up about twelve point one percent of the gross developable area. The objective of the two areas is to accommodate a diverse range of housing forms and densities that meet a minimum residential density of forty selling units per net residential hectare. Neighborhood areas are also for schools, parks, services, and local shops that are can located in a convenient distance from residents in the neighborhoods. Employment areas, we have shown in purple to the north, where the Villany Road, the Business District, and the south. They make up about forty-seven percent of the gross developable area. The objective of employment areas is to accommodate a diversity of light industrial, institutional, professional office buildings, and other uses that generate employment opportunities and economic type activity. It's also anticipated that the employment areas accommodate the city's focus sectors, including agribusiness, advanced manufacturing, construction, life sciences, transportation, and logistics. Additionally, policies within the employment areas aim to mitigate impacts on surrounding residential areas, natural areas, and other open spaces through appropriate development step racks and buffers.
Tracy, um, that's just because this is very complex and lots of info, just, uh, I love the way you're stepping through it, but uh, just while we're on the employment area, so one of the questions that uh Blass had asked was the green uh park area, or not sure what it's actually designated there, in the uh, just below that orange line along Carrot Creek on the west-hand side of the industrial land. A little bit further west, up north, part of that piece, and um, the question, I think, was protecting Carrot Creek, uh, yes, as a walkway, but what continuity of park, why, why would we have such a large green space up there? And maybe even the lower one that's.
Are you gonna get to that in your presentation?
The Lakeview concept, actually. When we get to the concepts, okay, with Lakeview, it kind of corresponds to why we have a park.
Okay, uh, I'm at a high level.
Hard to know where to ask questions.
No, that's fine.
Just wait to be recognized by the chair.
Yeah, yeah.
That might, when we get to it, might be able to be answered publicly, because a lot of the concept plans we're gonna do in camera, so just let us know what you can answer publicly. And Christine sounds like there's a high-level answer.
Yeah, at a high level, and this area was identified on the MVP as a, as a staging location for parks. Um, and um, it's also city-owned lands. So it's much easier for us to facilitate the collection of a large portion of land versus when you're dealing with several landlords.
Giving up city-owned developable land, maybe, or is.
Uh, within the confines of the ten percent.
Okay, keep going, Tracy.
But just how much. We have the mixed-use employment areas, shown in the white and purple patch, located north of the CN Rail and south of the Township Road in the Lakeview Business District. It makes up four point three percent of the gross developable area. Mixed-use employment areas meant to accommodate light industrial, office, and commercial uses that complement and primarily serve the employees within adjacent employment areas. The development forms and lot sizes in the mixed-use employment area are envisioned to be smaller in nature in order to provide a more transition. And just no, no area between the Lakeview Business District and the Shro neighborhood to the north. The major open spaces shown by the green make up about twenty-seven percent of the ASP area. Major open spaces include the environmental reserve around Carrot Creek, Big Lake, Sturgeon River, as well as municipal reserve, including the schools and parks, and the community amenity site. The objectives and policies within major open spaces are about minimizing any disruption caused by development to the topographies, wildlife habitat movements, and the natural environment, as well as recreating a high-quality and multifunctional green network that serves the recreational, social, cultural, and ecological needs of the area. And finally, we have the mixed-use areas, which is located in this, in the north center of Shro neighborhood in the pink. It makes up about one point seven percent of the gross developable area. It's meant to serve as a vibrant community vocal point with a range of commercial uses, apartment buildings, townhouses, and the community services all re, all arranged within a cohesive pedestrian-friendly environment. Overall, the proposed St. Albert West area structure plan aligns with the municipal development plan flourish. And also, just to clarify now that we have the map here, some of the differences from the last map that we saw in February, not generally is similar, but what's changed are the stormwater pond locations, because at the, we now have uh the technical studies that's currently under review. As well as the part that's been added along Carrot Creek and in the north for Badger lands. Everything else has stayed the same. That's part five, land use policies. Next is the part six implementation policies, which elaborates on the implementation process, development sequence, and working regionally with Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board, surrounding municipalities, and other key stakeholders. Part six is the future land use statistics, which discusses the gross areas, non-developable area, net developable area for roads, stormwater ponds, and land uses, and the anticipated residential densities and population, which is a chunk of it would be the Shro neighborhood. Part eight are the maps. We have fourteen different maps that would help explain the ASP texts and policies in a visual manner. Maps would um talk about the servicing network. Land uses, again, that's what we've seen in the previous slide, direction of development, site analysis. So that is the St. Albert West area structure plan overview of the structure. In terms of timelines and next steps, in the first row shown by the green, we have St. Albert West area structure plan anticipating to be completed in Q two of two thousand and twenty-four. That timeline would include the EMRB referral and circulation period. We currently have the neighborhood plans for Badger and Lakeview underway, just shown by the brown and purple lines. Anticipate completion of the neighborhood plans in two thousand and twenty-four, end of two thousand and twenty-four. And then Lakeview servicing would proceed in two thousand and twenty-four with construction in two thousand and twenty-seven and two thousand and twenty-eight. We'll pause now for questions and discussion regarding the St. Albert West area structure.
It's a heated one.
Yeah, just kind of maybe aligned with Councilor Killick's question in relation to the major open spaces in that area along Carrot Creek. Back in February, we had that discussion over the merits of uh, I think it was twenty to fifty. Is that included in the updated in relation to? Yeah, while it was still called MR, but uh, but so, so that's included in that discussion. Can you say, can it, can it be discussed and open?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so what we've incorporated is the designated floodline, which was uh last approved. And from that designated floodline recently approved, we've added twenty meters width of trail MR along Carrot Creek. Twenty meters being consistent with the Parks and Open Space Standards and Guidelines to accommodate the trail along Carrot Creek and the north shore of Big Lake.
So it, it actually does extend then, so you would actually have all your MR connected right to Big Lake then. There is connectivity on that.
ER, yeah, and MR for trail.
ER and MR, okay.
Good news.
I think one of the bit, sorry, one of the big distinctions of the major open spaces green area is that it, at this level, that higher ASP level, you're looking at a combination of environmental reserve, municipal reserve, park space. Um, so while it's a big green blob right now, there's actually different levels of green amongst the green.
Those I was just about to ask, is it possible to get?
A map that would show that?
Yeah. Where the floodplain is, the twenty meters.
We can, we can, we can pull that up, yeah.
Yeah, it would, yeah, it'd be interesting.
Well, you can pull it up right now. Perfect.
I can, I have an update, or we actually do.
Yeah, with the floodplain, the revised floodplain.
Um, and if you can see by this, just to speak to some of the things that um Blass brought up, there is also a a decent-sized park space dedicated as staging areas and such, um, for the planning of that park would happen later on. But south of Meadowview Drive right now as well. So that idea of like a, a community-level park is incorporated at this stage. In the area structure.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, two storm ponds.
And then there's some purple, and it feels like this really green bumpout, which is south of Range Road two six.
Yeah, and that's kind of where you're looking at.
Yeah. Um, but there's also that whole twenty-meter space plus the ER component as well, the supplement of you as well.
South of Meadowview.
Is it, yeah. I mean, I don't wanna get, I mean, we're talking, like you said, green blobs right now, so I mean, you see it along Carrot Creek where there's a few bumpouts like little, little amoeba attacks there, uh, I don't, I don't, I mean, at my level.
Create some of the findings that we've had with the um environmental reports that we've got gotten back about lands and some of the features that we may want to preserve within it.
Okay.
Okay, so, so there is two blocks, I will call them.
I'm connected.
These two, you know, I'm thinking like in, in Lakeview, in the city lands. And some of them, it was just the floodplain plus twenty meters, you would think it would be more linear, but there's these two blocks.
But it's not always just floodplain. There is also other natural features like tree stands and the things that have been incorporated within this.
Right, okay, that makes.
All right, so what are we looking at here?
Yeah.
The map of the major open spaces, the green hatch or the MR, the green and a pale of green is the ER.
Uh, it's the olive green.
Olive.
Olive.
The olive.
The, the, not the hatch, but the solid.
Big portion of green ER are.
Is ER, okay. So there's no environmental
Environment.
In Lakeview, or is very narrow, can't even see it.
Yeah, it's a very small amount. Unfortunately, the line work gets cut off, so the boundary um goes the line works, covers the green. There is, there is a very narrow portion of environmental reserve. Okay, oh, you can sort of see it, yeah, okay.
But it's the two blocks you're seeing are some tree stands or there's some little areas.
Tree stand, I, I don't remember the exact, exactly what they, all of them are, but it's tree stand, some of them are, um, important for wildlife. Um, some of the, these things are things that we can't collect under environmental reserve, because the province has very specific definitions of what can and cannot be dedicated as environmental reserve.
Then make us give up our MR.
So there's, that is one of the things that we're recommending, is that there may be so, there are some natural features that were identified as important that we have incorporated in the MR dedication.
I mean, if it's gonna fall out for the MR.
I, I, yeah, so that, so that area that you designated, south of Meadowview Drive, that could be park space. Like I, I just, on the map, it was small, but it's actually probably substantial size, right?
It would be, it would be enough to fit within the definitions of parks um classifications for a community park.
And does that connect, is that, is that kind of, that? I can't see that. Is that, is that like a connective kind of trail system all the way over to the rig given? I, I suggest like
That dark.
That little line there, yeah, 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 sorry, yeah.
What's that loopy thing right there?
That's a stormwater management facility that exists.
Is that the amoeba?
Sir, no.
Yes, it was done by the province for Ray Given Drive.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't recommend putting a stormwater management facility in environmental reserve.
Maybe we should try to have a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
These projects.
So is that bumpout? I'm still stuck with the bumpout. I mean, because that is private land, south of Meadowview. Private landowner, right? So does that take up some of that landowner space dedicated to MR then?
Yeah, so that would be part of it. Um, we'd have to go into a little bit more detail um at further planning.
Yep.
But um, right now, I think based upon the area structure plan, and Tracy, please correct, and Scott, please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, the dedication of MR that you see in here is approximately five percent.
Okay.
That is necessary for Lakeview. So there's an additional five percent that still needs to be collected from the individual landowners.
And that will show up in the NSP?
Yes.
We just can't see that a little bit more.
So these are the major MR parcels that we've got.
The big part.
Go ahead, Russ.
A couple of questions. Let's go down towards the Cook lands. Uh, there was some suggestion that uh the previous map was more rectangular and shaped, this is more organic, I guess would be a word. When did that change take place?
Oh, from it being um more of a square to a, of a lot, um, that happened.
So we've, um, at the time, I guess that would have been spring of this past year, uh, we had concepts uh that we were working on, and at that time, we didn't have the associated detailed uh engineering servicing design brief that pertains to all the stormwater management facilities, the appropriate locations, the sizing, et cetera. And so through our process throughout this year, we, uh, and in fact, our updated design brief was just completed late last week. Um, we have allocated the ponds in, from an engineering perspective, the correct locations. Um, the actual configuration, because it's still blob, blobish, amoeba-ish, can be, can be altered, tailored. Um, once, say, for instance, uh Mister Cook, we're go through an NP process, um, but through the course of this year, through our associated technical studies, that's where we've seen those changes.
Okay, so, so that design reflects new information based on technical studies.
Correct.
So that's probably the cheapest place to put the storm.
Generally speaking, I, I'm not an engineer, but he wanted to be the lowest, that makes the most sense. Um, also, so that it serves those lands, you would need that type of servicing to bring those lands on in the future.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, doesn't happen with that, so.
No, I get that, but if you wanted to shore up one somewhere else, you could pay a lot of money to regrade and.
Want it on the top of the hill.
Exactly, just costs more.
Yes, yeah.
So, next question, uh, I'm assuming that these studies that you've received uh contributed decisions around the, the land, I mean, the, the road design as it could exist.
Absolutely, we've, um, not only from the servicing, uh, the utility side of things, we have completed uh transportation impact assessment. Working collaboratively with the transportation team here, um, you know, talking about the natural features, working, so there, there. working collaboratively with the transportation team here. Um, you know, talking about the natural features working. So there there are uh a number of technical studies that have uh behind the scenes supported the overall land use concept for the ASP.
Okay, so I interested me because there, I mean, there was a presentation earlier suggesting a different alignment of the of the road. I would facilitate a different outcome, if you will. Implications of such decisions, more cost or what?
I mean, roadway networks can be altered in many different ways. It is additional time. There will be additional analysis. There's a cost associated to it. Um, you know, another alternative, which I have not discussed with administration, but we could move forward with this, but if somebody were to want to amend, um, they could take that on themselves and amend subsequent.
That come at the neighborhood structure plan or is that an ESP? Because this is.
It depends on the scale of the change and the impact of the change. If there is minor impact or no impact to the overall vision values and policies within the area structure plan, it can be um handled through the neighborhood plan. But if it has impact onto the ASP and it will require an amendment to the ASP, then we would ask them to come in and do that for us at that time.
And maybe if I could just offer, I I know Dean Schick is online and can certainly speak to it, but there there's two components to this. Obviously, what you're seeing is the the, you know, the engineering and the planning recommendations for the routing in particular of Leclerc Way. The other piece is Edmonton owns that traffic circle. In fact, the developer is going to put in the traffic circle, the way I understand it, with the encouragement of Edmonton. They're going to do it one way or the other. Uh, and and so we have been in in conversation with Edmonton to try and ensure that alignment is protect our equities doing that process. Um, but that is is not insignificant because they're going to put the node where they want to put the node at the end of the day.
So that that sort of leads to my last question then is around you know, regional collaboration on this plan and the circulation of this plan. What's the process going forward now? Uh, and there was sort of a comment that they hadn't seen the changes, but we've just made them. What what's the circulation plan from now on?
We will, um, when we finalize our technical studies and our area sector plan document, we'll circulate to our neighbors, Edmonton, Pro- Province, other key internal, external stakeholders during that formal circulation period sometime in the new year before we go to council first reading.
It was in your, uh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
But previous to this, I think Wes was asking, right?
Well, so it did show Q two or twenty three. Did it? Did it show tw- twenty three or was that twenty four?
Twenty four, twenty four.
Twenty four, okay. But it's not as if they haven't had an opportunity to see what's going on so far.
Yeah.
Assuming the Cook lands were part of that distribution list.
They.
Sorry.
For the distribution.
They will be, yes.
Will, but not.
Or they were the.
They were?
Phase one, two engagement post, open houses.
Okay, I think the updates is what you're asking about, right? I think they will be included on that engagement with the updates, right? When it's complete, is that correct?
Yes. The stage that we're at now, we came to council before going back out to the public.
Makes sense. Make sure we're aligned.
Definitely, so I got it. Okay, thanks for that.
So.
So.
What do you want to say? I'm going to go to Mike first.
Yeah, please.
But it's there to recognize.
Your hand is outside, you're going.
Um, so the the area south of uh Meadow View, it's got a new little uh part space. I think that's probably where the old group spruce trees are. I'm guessing somewhere around there. And and now it's got two new stormwater management ponds in it, um, which are are good. Um, my my question is, is what would be the process to have that whole uh chunk of land south of of Meadow View designated as either environmental reserve or um or part space so that that, I I'm going back to the presentation we had from Bless that um, it's a fairly significant piece of land to fly over for birds, protected species, uh traffic, traffic flow for animals, all those good things that Bless had mentioned and uh uh my my question is to be the process to actually uh take those next steps to to designate that as all, all, I I guess, green land rather than than purple land.
So you can't designate any more environmental reserve that is confined by the Municipal Government Act. So what we've taken is what we can take. So the other option, should you want to make it all green and paint it all as green, um we would have to probably reengineer to move the stormwater management facilities out of there. Um, and then you'd have to purchase the land. And I think we've talked about this in the past about how much the land purchase would be for those lands south of. And then we would designate that as park space or MR if you would like. You could just leave it as park. Though having the confines of the MR designation.
So what, why would the farm water management ponds come out of, need to come out of there if it was still park?
Well, we would, we don't.
I mean, they.
The the technical component of it is it doesn't have to, but they wouldn't be green then. That would be a utility. And that's a different designation than green. So if you wanted them all green, then they have to come out. But if it's just to put the green around all the stormwater facilities, that would be the, it would be still the same similar process. It's just that that would be area set aside for utilities.
Essentially, the purple area that I think you're identifying just south of McKinney, that or sorry.
Head overview on.
Um, that would be uh, seeing this point, it'd be identified as green, but it would have to be purchased. Right? Storm ponds would stay as is unless you didn't want that, then we would have to go through the reengineering process.
Yeah, no, I'm not. I wouldn't, uh, I mean, obviously, hydrological studies say that's the best place for.
Yeah.
You know, downhill. So that's the best place for our stormwater management. And could you refresh my memory? It's like eighty-five thousand per acre to purchase roughly, is it?
Hmm, what's higher than that? I thi- I think it's about sixteen million dollars for the whole area. And I can't remember what that is per acre.
Sorry, that's payroll deduction, buddy.
Yeah. I think the other thing too is, I mean, I guess that's a council decision, just looking at the ownership map that is uh, I guess technically impacting some of the private landowners in the area. Which could have, you know, you could have opposition to that as well from from the landowners, should you wish to pursue that route.
Is it one owner? Is it one owner?
No, it's quite, it's quite.
That's what I thought. Yeah, it's quite a few.
I believe it's four, at least four.
Any more questions? Mike?
Uh, no, I think I think that's the the big one. I just look at that map and I'm, you know, I see a little teeny spur close to Ray Given Drive. I'm wondering how you would even utilize that space, the purple?
It's big.
It's it's actually quite deceiving. This is very high level, large scale map. Um, there's quite a bit of frontage on there that would be prime uh developable land. Um.
It's almost forty-five acres.
Forty-five, is that's, yeah.
Sorry, is that?
Forty-five acres, that purple piece south of the road.
Yeah.
Not that little, yeah, in total, not that little fish.
Angular piece between the two stormwater management pond.
That way you're thinking about.
Well, no, I'm.
And and there'll be further details when we get into the neighborhood plan, showing a little bit more of the refinement of the cost.
We're not going to see the neighborhood plans, right? That's that's not our authority to approve, right?
That's correct.
Yes, deserve a memo.
Yeah, we would be, yes, we'd be circulating what's come in and all that.
Was some very clear. Yeah, language.
Can't touch this council. I guess we can always.
Yeah, yeah.
Always can, but they are administrative documents, but absolutely, you would see, you would see.
I hesitate to to get us in that.
And and quite possibly, we haven't, so, we haven't designed the neighborhood plan for that area because that is um the onus of the private landowner to facilitate that. So they would go in and figure out, well, maybe a pond needs to go into go a little further to the east to to cover some of those. You know, because that's, they they get more developable lands for that uh in their perspective.
Yeah.
Um, these, again, it's high level. Generally, you're going to need two ponds in this area.
Right.
And they're going to be ponds of X amount of liters.
Okay, no, I just, to to put it in perspective of having less here to to make them aware that it comes, we we've taken as much environmental reserve and municipal reserve as we can and.
Yeah.
To protect that land would.
There will be an additional in theory, like, um, we need to break out how much has been taken specifically on those individual properties. They may still own owe a little bit more municipal reserve, they may not. Um, but if they do, at the neighborhood fund, we'd look at dedication of additional park space if necessary.
Yeah.
If if allowable.
But in order of magnitude, sixteen, seventeen million uh to buy that little strip of land or the value of that strip of land is uh at least indicates the order of magnitude that we would be looking at. Okay. It's. Yeah, just something Adriania just said. So after this kind of, we see this, uh, you said something about it then having to go back out to the public again in relation to consultations and and that so, or or did I mishear that?
Yeah, so I was just saying, I think there was um kind of comments about, well, we haven't seen these changes and this is all new information. We've literally have just gotten some of these reports in the past few weeks and we're bringing it to council first. So it's not like we're we're just.
So.
We haven't had a chance to.
But they're obviously.
Have any dialogue or.
Right, they're obviously.
They are. They haven't been up because they haven't been fully accepted at this stage. We're still stealing.
Once that happens, it just goes to something that Bless had said in their presentation too about maybe reengaging the public or whatever. Will there be, I mean, other than what's already on cultivate conversation, will they be able? Is it signing's intent that you're, we're going to take this new information, update it, and then go back out to the public or?
Public hearing, there'll be public hearing.
Going through the public hearing process.
Yeah.
Um, there won't be specific engagement at this time due to the timelines.
Yeah.
And envisioned within these documents.
Um, but there will be opportunity, um, quite a lot of opportunity before you go to public hearing for everyone to review all of the documents, the technical reports. All of that will be available on.
And lineups. Yeah, I just wanted.
And and the, the information, it'll be sent out saying, hey.
Yeah.
Check it out here.
Yeah. Good. No, I just wanted to make. Yeah. You identified that, so I just wanted to pick.
There is some, um desire to get this done by the end of Q two so we can get on with the servicing of it, right? Counselor Hughes, and then I'll call it break because I think we'll go on camera after this, so.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
Yeah, I this is a, I think a relatively quick one. So the neighborhood plans, when are we expecting those to actually come forward? Because we need to have that done before we approve servicing. Is that correct? Or can we do servicing without the neighborhood plans? What's the timeline on that?
Counselor Hughes, we don't see them. We don't approve them. Neighborhood.
Okay, but and so I I guess still, when are you planning to do the neighborhood plans?
They were the Gantt chart.
Okay, sorry.
And is, yeah, put the Gantt chart back up. It's in there.
Neighborhood plans for the city-owned lands, we're planning on having completed by the end of next year.
Okay.
And the other.
Does their own.
Yeah.
And the other lands would be done by private parties, so we don't control the that timeline. So we only control the neighborhood plan process for our own lands. Counselor Hughes.
Great. And the the Badger lands hasn't really been mentioned at all. I know you used to have the neighborhood plans on here as well, so are we going to see something for the Badger lands or no?
That will be part of the next uh next discussion, counsel.
It's in camera, but we're not seeing the neighborhood plan for Badger.
No, but are we even seeing a general ASP for Badger? Is that going to be public ever or?
That was in your confidential part of your package. It's in there.
Yeah. Okay, but is it ever going to be public?
Yes, once, once it's been approved uh by the subdivision authority, which is Adrian, yes.
Okay, do we have a timeline of when we think that might happen, Adrian? I don't want to rush you. I am just trying to ask just so that the public's has a realistic expectation timeline of when it definitely won't be and when it might be. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I I think it's the same timeline, really. Um, they're showing up there right now. If you look on the little Gantt chart, Badger and Lakeview Neighborhood Plan are both uh by the end of next year.
So they'll be public at that time? Or will they be public prior to that?
Um, I guess they would, like, they they would be public publicly approved by that time. There might be some public documents before, but it's that would be when they would be publicly approved or publicly available.
The one thing I'm wondering is, so we, I mean, really, the the ASP is very, very high level, like employment, but um for the bulk of it, um. Are, why are we not doing at least that same level for Badger lands right now? Is there a reason? Or is that in camera thing? I just, I don't know why we're we're only showing the public one half of the two things.
It's in.
Because it's municipal land and we need to talk about it as a, as a corporation, council and administration before anything's public.
Okay.
A badger is included in this.
Yeah, the municipal portion of Badger and the municipal portion of the west.
So the specific uses, but it is included, right?
Yes.
So it's valid. So just to confirm, both Badger, uh, city-owned Badger and Lakeview lands um will be discussed um in private. Uh, we are working to prepare uh on behalf of the city of St. Albert, both NP, so we're working concurrently on those. Um, but at this time, we can't get into uh specifics to the public as we need to have some conversations with with yourself and the rest of council and administration.
So so the just, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just trying to understand. Because we did have like the blob of purple for Lakeview and nobody knows what's going to go in Badger, myself included, really. Um. And so is it just because we haven't had that camera discussion with council to kind of give the direction is why we're not doing the public blob even for Badger? Is that the rationale behind it?
Tracy, can I ask you to put the map?
Yeah, it's on the map.
Is it? And I missed it? I'm sorry.
So the Badger is the upper right corner.
Up there? Okay.
Yeah.
I was just looking at the center of the screen, so forgive me. Okay. Okay, so yeah, it's blocked. Okay, perfect. That's all I have then. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, let's call break. Been an hour and a half, man. Look this and uh fifteen minutes, and then when we get back, we'll make a motion to go to camera. That unless there's any more public questions. Um, and then that gives a chance to throw out the committee and room mix up.
Um and then that gives a chance to throw the committee and room mix up.
It was unanimous we're back in public and I was just asking what next steps so Adrian who's doing that?
Next steps from the area structure plan perspective is we are moving forward with finalization of our overall ASP and the supporting technical studies as Tracy and the team mentioned once that is finalized we go into circulation early in the new year. We'll go to EMRB and
Council first reading and public hearing in Q2.
Any questions on that guys? And there is no there's no motion that we need a committee out of this so thanks guys I I am shocked that this took three hours I thought we would be real quick but it was honestly was a good conversational wrap so why don't you get your Millennium Heart Consultants join us for lunch and it's 12:30 almost so let's take 20 minutes to work through as much you need are you gonna run home and let dog go?
And then I'm gonna stay there and
You wanna have lunch first?
No, I'm gonna take it with me.
Kathy just so you know I'm sick and I don't know how long much longer I'm gonna be verticals so I'm gonna play it by ear this afternoon.
Just put the laptop beside you on the pillow.
I I might.
That's how I survive Natalie I understand what you're going through if you have anything like what I did.
You got the concepts emailed to you? She hear me Sean?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah you.
Yeah it was in our package.
Well no the concepts were in an email you got.
I haven't even looked at my email this morning.
If I'm seeing it stands that council is leaning heavily towards one of the three options I'm gonna try to push forward a decision today if not we'll have to do it in January.
I'm I'm leaning towards the big one.
That's that's good to know so you too. That would help our planning step a lot. Thanks for lunch.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Councilor Killip just got thirty-odd votes in the House of Chambers that he supported their eSport concept of a Fortnite Cafe.
Humanity's sake.
Humanity's sake. They're debating what they should do.
Have to figure it out.
Take care, take care. What else do we think?
Paintball.
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 That would be awesome.
Yeah. This is a presentation and the members of the council were down there like, "Do you know how much land this area?" Go on. It was awesome. Anyway, sorry, we're back. And we get to talk recreation. So, is there a Fortnite Cafe in Moni?
No.
Okay, so, how's it doing? She's making the presentation. Do you have Amanda?
Still leading and then turn it over to Amanda. So, we're really pleased to be here today to present to Standing Committee the whole our options on the low, medium, high options for Millennium Park in alignment with council direction from last May to come back with three options for your perusal. So, this is a really exciting landmark project for the city. It's a legacy project for our community and so we're very excited to date. I'm going to turn it over to Amanda Wild as the intros and present with our consultants. So, over to you.
Thank you, Danielle. And I'm just going to share my screen really quickly. Fortunately, no mic talent with this is not great, so please bear with me. So, thank you, Council for having us today to talk about Millennium Park. This site is located along with Georgian River Valley in the core of our downtown. So, we thought it was really important to start off with the land acknowledgement specific to this project and this piece of land. So, just respectfully acknowledging that we are on Treaty Six territory, traditional lands of First Nation and Métis people. As Treaty people, Indigenous and non-Indigenous, we share the responsibility for stewardship of the land. So, I'm just going to really briefly introduce our city team and our consultant team. Thankfully, you won't have to hear me speak. It's mostly our consultant team today. But from the city of St. Albert and our project team, I'd like to introduce Carson Swiers as our project manager, Ben Jonah, our park planning specialist, Tara Phazer as our park planning specialist and project coordinator for this project. And then supporting, we also have Tim Saunders and a number of folks online as well as Adrian. From our consultant team is three firms, ISL Engineering, Dub Architects, and Spencer Environmental. So, here today for you is James Allen from ISL Engineering. Speaking today will be Kevin Dieterman from ISL Engineering as well as Michael Duff.
Kevin, Michael, and?
Kevin.
Kevin and Michael, okay.
We have James back there. So, just a little overview of what we're planning on kind of sharing today. We want to just remind Council of what Council, what concept planning is and the process for concept planning that we've gone through to date. As we shared with Council back in May, there were a number of technical studies that we were able to complete over the summer, so we want to share a little bit about what we learned through that. And then, of course, the bulk of today will be spent providing an overview of the three concept plan options. Just reminding that concept planning is not actually a highly specific process. It can look really detailed in the maps and things that you'll see today and the renders. We really want you to focus on what the amenities are being provided, generally kind of where and how the design elements are in the flow of people. There are a lot of details that require further work as we go through this as well as feedback and lots of decision points still to come through the detailed design process. So, just, just reminding Council, this is really a high-level look at it, a little bit more refined than maybe what we saw in the 2019 concept plan, but it's still at that conceptual level. Again, just as a quick reminder, Millennium Park, the idea of Millennium Park is grounded in the Downtown Area Redevelopment Plan. It's an important aspect of creating a vital, engaged, and active downtown, and is intended to work in concert with the number of DARP initiatives that are aligned in the Downtown Area Redevelopment Plan. DARP calls for Millennium Park to be a centerpiece of downtown, and the work that we'll share with you today brings that idea forward. So, all concepts that you see today are built from the 2018 concept plan for Millennium Park. This concept was based on significant public engagement, balanced protection of nature, natural features, sorry, with providing active open area and pavilion building. Reflecting the original work completed, the high concept option before you today maintains a lot of the same features within the original concept plan, including the spray feature, the opportunity for skating, a pavilion building with a combination of washrooms, public space, leasable space, as well as space required to, for site management and supporting events. So, just a reminder that really we took the original concept, modified it using Council's direction, but the heart of it is still grounded in that 2018 concept. And based on your direction, the original concept again has been modified to meet the goals of improved flow between Lyons Park, St. Albert Place, and Millennium Place. It improves viewscapes towards the river. You'll see that in all three options. And then also, all three options explore increasing open space and providing
Thank you. So, Councilor Kiel just got thirty-odd votes. In the House of Chambers that he supported their eSport concept of a Fortnite Cafe.
Humanities.
The Humanities. They're debating what they should.
Have to figure out something.
Talk daycare, can we talk daycare? What else do we think?
Uh, paintball.
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 That would be awesome. Yeah.
This is the presentation and the members of the council were down there like, do you know how much land this area? Go on. It was awesome. Anyway, sorry, we're back. And we get to talk recreation. So is there Fortnite Cafe in Millennium?
Enough? No. Oh, yeah. Not yet. We go.
Yes. Okay, so, um, how do, how's it doing? He's making the presentation. Amanda?
Still lead it and then turn it over to Amanda. So we're really pleased to be here today to present to Standing Committee the whole, our, um, options on the low, medium, high options for Millennium Park. In alignment with council direction from last May to come back with three options for your perusal. So this is a really exciting landmark project for the city. Um, it's a legacy project for our community and so we're very excited to date. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Amanda Wild as the intros and present with our consultants. So, over to you.
Thank you, Danielle. And I'm just going to share my screen really quickly. Fortunately, no, my talent with this is not great, so please bear with me. So, thank you, Council, uh, for having us today to talk about Millennium Park. Um, this site is located along the Sturgeon River Valley in the core of our downtown. Uh, so we thought it was really important to start off with the land acknowledgement, um, specific to this project and this piece of, of land. So just, uh, respectfully acknowledging that we are on Treaty Six territory, traditional lands of First Nation and Métis people. As Treaty people, indigenous and non-indigenous, we share the responsibility for stewardship of the land. Um, so I'm just going to really briefly introduce our city team and our consultant team. Thankfully, you won't have to hear me speak. It's mostly our consultant team today. But from the city of St. Albert and our project team, I'd like to introduce, uh, Kirsten Swirrs as our project manager, uh, Ben Jonah, our park planning specialist, Tara Phazer as our park planning specialist and project coordinator for this project. Um, and then supporting, we also have Tim Saunders and a number of folks online as well as Adrian. Uh, from our consultant team is three firms, ISL Engineering, Dub Architects, and Spencer Environmental. So here today, uh, for you is, uh, James Allen from ISL Engineering. Uh, speaking today will be Kevin Dieterman from ISL Engineering, as well as Michael Duff.
Kevin, Michael, and?
Kevin.
Kevin and Michael. Okay.
We have James back there. Uh, so just a little overview of what we're planning on kind of sharing today. Um, we want to just remind Council of what Council, what concept planning is and the process for concept planning that we've gone through to date. Um, as we shared with Council back in May, there were a number of technical studies that we were able to complete over the summer, so we want to share a little bit about what we learned through that. Um, and then, of course, the, the bulk of today will be spent providing an overview of the three concept plan options. Just reminding that concept planning is not actually a highly specific process. It can look really detailed in the maps and things that you'll see today and the renders. Um, we really want you to focus on what the amenities are being provided, generally kind of where and how the design elements are, um, in the flow of people. Um, but there are a lot of details that require further work as we go, uh, through this, as well as feedback and lots of decision points still to come through the detailed design process. So just, just reminding Council, this is really a high-level look at it, a little bit more refined than maybe what we saw in the 2019 concept plan, but it's still at that conceptual level. Again, just as a quick reminder, um, Millennium Park, um, the idea of Millennium Park is grounded in the Downtown Area Redevelopment Plan. It's an important aspect of creating a vital, engaged, uh, and active downtown. And it's intended to work in concert with the number of DARP initiatives that are aligned in the Downtown Area Redevelopment Plan. Um, that calls for Millennium Park to be a centerpiece of downtown, and the work that we'll share with you today brings that idea forward. So all concepts that you see today are built from the 2018 concept plan for Millennium Park. This concept was based on significant public engagement, balanced protection of nature, natural features, sorry, with providing active open area and pavilion building. Um, reflecting the original work completed, the high, uh, concept option before you today maintains a lot of the same features within the original concept plan, including the spray feature, the opportunity for skating, a pavilion building with a combination of washrooms, public space, leasable space, as well as space required to, uh, for site management and supporting events. Um, so just a reminder that really we took the original concept, um, modified it using Council's direction, but the heart of it is still grounded in that 2018 concept. And, uh, based on your direction, the original concept again has been modified to meet the goals of improved flow, uh, between Lyons Park, St. Albert Place, and Millennium Place. Um, it improves viewscapes towards the river. You'll see that in all three options. Um, and then also, all three options explore increasing open space and providing, uh, what we need to, um, create space for, sorry, create space for events and community gathering. So just reminding you of the direction that we use to modify this. At this point, I will invite Kevin Dieterman with ISL Engineering to review our approach and to give you the, uh, fun bit of today's presentation.
Hey, thank you, Amanda. So I'll briefly run through the approach we took, uh, for this project and to get us up to where we are today. The first was an assessment of the existing concept plan, so looking at what was working, where there were opportunities for improvement, and how, uh, what was prepared in the concept plan could directly inform, uh, the work that, uh, we put forward. Next, we assess the existing conditions on the site, so looking at what's there and, and how it could be worked with. We reviewed alignments to policy. We refined the project principles that guide the design. And then we completed the concept plan options that are being presented. So it was those, uh, five steps. One key approach we took, which is fundamental to the approach, is treating Millennium Park and Lyons Park as one contiguous green space for the purposes of developing the concept. Both projects came out at the same time, kind of as partners to each other. And this really helps us respond to one of the three council priorities of low improvements, connections between the two parks and to the river, and just creating, uh, taking advantage of complementary amenities to create one larger usable destination. Uh, of course, the focus for today is on Millennium Park, uh, so we'll keep that focus there, but the process was underpinned in this, uh, contiguous green space. First, uh, is the analysis that we completed. So, uh, looking at the physical conditions of the site, and you can see, I won't go through all those, uh, little dots on there, but we understood what's there on the ground today. We looked, uh, analyzed the placemaking study, the 2018 concept, uh, the Downtown Area Redevelopment Plan, uh, City Council Strategic Plan, and the Municipal Development Plan. So in addition to that physical, uh, conditions, we looked at the policy context as well. Key to the, uh, analysis of the physical conditions, uh, are a number of features that are shown on the plan here, so I'll go through them quickly. First is the berm and Red Willow Trail, obviously. Oh, thank you, Matt. I'll just let you highlight. It'll be less confusing that way. Uh, next is the floodway, obviously, uh, within, uh, the Sturgeon River, uh, an adjacent area. Then we have the protected flood fringe that extends into the park itself, that's shown in the light blue area there. There are existing wetlands in the forested area. That's the two darker blue areas. Those wetlands were created as a result of the creation of the berm a number of years ago, which impeded the natural flow of surface water into the river. Next, we have area of mature forest shown in the green. And within that mature forest, there is another darker green that you can barely make out that are really high-value mature trees, so some nice specimens there. There's the informal path that runs from St. Albert Place through to the lawn in Millennium Park. And then there's some drainage infrastructure that exists as well, um, kind of connecting St. Anne Promenade to the river. And then within Lyons Park, there's a picnic shelter. We did an assessment of washroom building and an existing playground. So that kind of comes into play in a few minutes. Following the identification of the physical conditions and the constraints, um, that, yeah. That are presented there, we looked at, um, the opportunities. So we identified logical opportunities to make improvements that satisfy the three council priorities. So we really focused on identifying connections, um, that's to the city and to the river and between Millennium and Lyons Parks. We focused on views into and out of the park, so taking advantage of those adjacent, uh, natural assets and making sure they're visible. Points of arrival and mobility patterns to and within the parks, and then potential locations for key amenities such as, uh, the pavilion and flexible open spaces. So we did kind of a high-level planning exercise next. And then we refined the project principles, and we identified seven key principles. First is that the parks are key to driving activity downtown. This is really the focus on the DARP plan, and that this park is all about being an enhancement and an amenity within downtown, so that, uh, they're designed to attract a variety of users, activities, and events, and that's creating spaces for both passive and active uses. So walking, picnicking, group activities, resting and people watching, play, et cetera. Next, the parks, uh, Millennium Park in particular must be designed to be flexible and accommodate large-scale events. And we have heard that this is key to the success of Millennium Park. That there must be space and supporting amenities for holding spectacular events. Number three, the parks must be well-connected to each other, the streets, the buildings, trail network, St. Albert Place, and the river. And that connectivity includes views and sightlines, so it's got to be easy to get into and out of and through the parks and have that direct physical and visual connection to the river. The ecology of the site, including the river and the tree stands, are important aspects of the character of the area and should be capitalized on. So we've attempted to minimize impacts to the key ecological features while still presenting a bold new urban space for St. Albert. If features are disturbed, we're attempting to mitigate the loss through other ecological design features on site, so we know we can't replace everything like-for-like, but we'll do our best to, uh, minimize the impact. Number five, uh, the park must provide amenities that promote winter use, so, uh, the key item here is the freeze way, the much-loved freeze way that's held in, in Lyons Park, but we need to ensure that supporting infrastructure, both permanent and seasonal, is in place to allow the park to be a dynamic place year-round. The parks must be made accessible to all users regardless of ability, age, gender, background, or social demographic. So in addition to utilizing barrier-free design for the physical access and mobility, it's also about providing that range of uses again that encourage all types of citizens to use the space, so equitable access and accommodation for everyone within the parks. And lastly, the park should reflect the indigenous and Métis history of the area and act as a means of advancing reconciliation. So there's an opportunity to tell the story of the site, its traditional uses, development patterns, relationships to the river, et cetera. Uh, that's done through engaging appropriately with partners so that the plan is developed with and not for those partners. So we utilize two big moves in coming up, uh, with the original concepts and the kind of the highest-level planning. And these two big moves apply to the three options that we'll present today. So first is about opening the park to the river, making physical and visual connections to the river and Red Willow Trail. Uh, in order to do that, we are proposing to remove, uh, some of the forested area. And there are different levels of impacts in the three different options. And secondly is regrading the site to bring the level of the park up to the level of Red Willow Trail. So creating a more, uh, contiguous level space between Sana and Promenade on Red Willow Trail, which will help to enhance views and limit barriers to moving between the parks and the river and the trail system. I think it's important to note here that there is an area of misalignment, uh, the impact to the natural areas, uh, that there's a misalignment with the MDP here. And I think that's something we can get into in more detail later, but, um, we feel that it's a really important, uh, step or approach to take in order to, uh, satisfy those three priorities identified. The next big move is making a strong connection to St. Anne Promenade. So really, the park should engage with the surrounding urban fabric, including the future redevelopment across the street, across St. Anne Promenade, that may become a driver of daily activity and vibrancy to the site. So that's about making key amenities of the park visible and easily accessible. It'll help to enhance St. Anne Promenade and the activities that take place there, namely the farmer's market, so really taking advantage of those adjacencies. And pragmatically, it takes advantage of the existing utility services and their location and helps to reduce costs by, uh, not having to extend those as far into the site. Okay, now we'll dive into the three options, starting with the low development option. And this option, as do all the options, focused on creating flexible open spaces, but in the low option, that's at a reduced scale from medium and high, obviously. Here we are retaining existing forest, uh, shown, well, maybe I'll start according to the numbers here. Uh, firstly, we have a large open plaza located alongside St. Anne Promenade, uh, shown as number one. Number two is a large shade shelter in the plaza that will help support some of those, uh, activities and events that occur there. Number three is a large open lawn area, uh, that's designed to be, again, level in grade from St. Anne Promenade to Red Willow Trail. That's a large flexible space that could be used for events and passive activities. And then number four are retained forested areas. So the retaining the existing forest and the ecological functions is a priority of this option. So that includes retaining, uh, as much of the wetland as possible, and of course, those high-value trees that I, I spoke about earlier. Uh, it's important to note that, uh, no pavilion is provided in this option, but rather the large shade shelter is located, and washrooms are retained in Lyons Park. Um, you'll note there are trails located throughout the, the plan. They'll be supported by seating and lighting, um, throughout the park to, uh, to create those amenities. Here is a view looking from the south towards the river of the existing condition. And then here is the proposed condition. So again, you'll see the large open space connecting the park to the river and Red Willow Trail. Then the next slide shows the existing view from the north, looking south towards St. Anne Promenade. And here is a proposed with the large plaza and shade shelter alongside Red Willow Place and St. Anne Promenade. Next is a view, existing view, looking toward the Children's Bridge from within the park and the proposed. So you can still see the Children's Bridge there, but, uh, the open lawn area connecting Millennium Park and Lyons Park, so increasing the flexible usable space and that physical connection between. Here is an existing view along Red Willow Trail looking towards St. Albert Place and the proposed. Again, really opening up, uh, and enhancing that connection between the parks and the river. And then lastly is just a view from the open lawn looking out towards the river. Um, St. A, St. Albert Place would be on the right hand behind the trees there. Next is the medium development option. Yeah, please, Amanda.
I just put those in the room. Uh, you are, you do have these, um, with you, um, and online. They were emailed to you. Um, so if you want to follow along, we have some blown-up views for you.
No problem. So in the medium development option, we have a larger plaza shown as number one again, which is broken up by some landscape features with, uh, incorporated seating, so, uh, recognizing St. Albert as a botanical art city, we want to incorporate landscaping, uh, in usable spaces, uh, where it's feasible. There's a small pavilion building, which Michael will go through shortly. Greater tree removal in this option allows for a larger open lawn and enhanced views and connections between the park and the river. The central path that was shown in the low option between St. Anne Promenade and the Children's Bridge is, is removed to create a larger contiguous lawn area. Uh, rather, people are roded along the perimeter slightly to the east or to the west to reach the plaza area. Boardwalks are provided through the forest to allow access from the east end of St. Anne Promenade and to provide a really unique experience and allow for the potential of interpretive or educational elements to be incorporated. Again, the area of highest value trees are maintained, and a new playground is proposed to be centrally located to supplement the existing play feature in Lyons Park, really promoting greater daily activity in Millennium Park. And it's supported by what we're calling the River Deck, which is a, a small deck between the playground and Red Willow Trail, providing separation, uh, between those two uses and providing seating that's oriented either to the river or to the playground. Just to get another location for people to gather and rest and kind of enjoy the surroundings. There is a new picnic shelter proposed beside the playground with some additional picnic tables kind of scattered in the lawn. And like the low development option, there are trails and seating proposed without. And, uh, something I forgot to mention for the low option is that surface drainage is proposed to be captured in landscape, uh, drainage features, low-impact development, stormwater management, it's called. And so we're trying to replicate that wetland function that exists in the forest today with these new kind of engineered landscape drainage facilities. And, sorry, washrooms? And, uh, washrooms are located in, uh, in the small pavilion building. And, and removed from Lyons Park.
And removed?
Yes.
Okay. So we're considering them as two separate projects, Millennium and Lyons, but we've kind of considered them as planning together so that we're not duplicating service. But this project we're talking about and the, the costing is all related to Millennium only.
Okay, but why are we taking up washrooms in, in Lyons Park?
Want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Um, we did a structural assessment of the existing washroom building in Lyons Park. Um, part of that is it's located in one of the lowest parts of the park, so it does flood. Um, and it no longer meets code, so the investment required to bring it up to code and deal with the flooding issues and that, um, is substantial. Um, and we felt that we could provide enough and expanded washroom space in Millennium to not only take the, what was being provided in Lyons, but expand upon that without duplicating services in, in really close proximity to each other.
But low option, you keep the ones.
Correct.
So we're going to have to calculate the price of remediating that washroom into option one and essentially, right?
Yeah, we maintain the existing service. We don't, our standard for citywide, uh, parks, which Millennium is, is to provide washroom facilities. It doesn't, um, stop us from providing porta-potties and those kind of, on the low development option, providing on those temporary or seasonal kind of washrooms as well to kind of help meet that standard. Um, but as part of the Lyons Park, um, RMR project that we've kind of initiated alongside that, we'll bring those costs forward. They're functional right now. Um, but in the long term, they do need, they do need an upgrade.
So we'll consider Lyons Park as a separate project?
But I'm just saying, that, that's a big difference between the option low and medium.
Correct.
That we need to address in your Lyons Park. Okay.
Yeah, and that investment may be required regardless of, will be required regardless of Millennium. It's just whether, depending on the settlement option is chosen, it may allow us to just eke Lyons along until Millennium is completed or bring it forward as part of the Lyons RMR charter.
Okay. There's also some SEPTED issues at Lyons. It's an older configured building, so we've got lots of vandalism and items that happen there as well. So this allows us to move up to and advance our design in Millennium and with more current structure.
I just wanted to point that out. That, yeah, is a key difference.
I think it's important to note, for sure.
Councilor McKay?
Yeah, I don't want to jump in too much because I don't want to get in the middle of the presentation, but you bring up the washrooms. Could we not incorporate, or was consideration given to incorporating some of the washrooms in Red Willow, uh, place? Like the seniors?
The seniors' center.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I can speak a little bit to that. We did have a preliminary meeting with the St. Albert Seniors Association. Um, you'll note that in the, um, agenda package that was provided, um, they are certainly potentially open to that conversation. Um, their facility operations and the way, and where the washrooms are and those types of things would really require a lot of more conversation that we didn't, um, really have time or kind of scope to do within this project, but it's certainly, uh, something that they had brought up as an option as well. Um, but would just require quite a bit more work, um, on that building.
Let's come back to that one, Ken. Okay, keep going. Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's good. Okay, we'll move on to the high development option. I have more images to show. Oh, pardon me, did I skip right over?
So we, to save time?
All right, uh, no, we're not trying to save that much time. I paged right over. Okay, here is a view again, looking from the south towards the river. And you can see the larger open contiguous lawn, a larger plaza space, uh, the small pavilion building, uh, and then the, the network of trails connecting the plaza and St. Anne Promenade to the river, and then as well the playground. Nope, that's fine. We'll see it in the next one. Here's the same view of the existing, looking to the south and the proposed. Again, showing the plaza and the pavilion building. Again, showing the plaza and the pavilion building close to Saint Anne Promenade. And then the the lawn area connecting over to Lions Park. Now is the time when I say I have more images in the high development option that applied to both medium and high, because uh as you'll see, the differences are are quite deep though.
Here, I just had a comment, if I could see that picture of the view from the uh from the front of City Hall to the to the river. I, it went by too quick.
City Hall?
Saint Anne.
Yeah, Saint Anne.
Okay, that one?
Yeah, so do you see the river or do you just see that building? That's what I'm concerned about.
Sorry, Chris, pardon?
I guess, is it the bridge that she's uh?
No, it's Council Brmaski, um, the building, um, it will depend on where you're standing. Um, on the second, obviously, the building, um, because the trees there are quite large and mature as you come around the corner, kind of along Saint Anne Promenade. The building is kind of tucked away kind of deliberately, um, because those trees are going to obstruct quite a bit of views already. Not that that's a bad thing, say that like it's a bad thing, um, but that's kind of why that building is a little bit tucked to the side. Um, is it enables the most views, but it does, um, as you're approaching Millennium from the Saint Anne Promenade kind of SAP area. Um, it it is going to be a little bit in the way for sure, um, but as you move into the space, um, that's when the views really open up.
Okay, so question, get some more viewing options as you see them, high options that they're going to present next. They'll give you some more context, I think, Council Brmaski, to what you're gonna see in the space.
It was a huge.
Yeah.
Okay, and then lastly, the high development option. So this is very similar to the medium development option in the overall configuration and layout and the size of the spaces. However, the plaza is slightly larger and it's wide open. We removed the the landscape features that were proposed in the medium option. The pavilion is larger and Michael will describe um what is contained in within there. And the pavilion is again located close to the existing forest off to the east side. The high development option does contain a spray deck, which is located right kind of in front of the pavilion. But again, retaining the large open plaza space. We have what we're calling the Cafe Plaza, located just on the south side of the pavilion. So we're focusing a lot of activity and amenities in that location. And then similar to the medium option, the greater tree removal for the larger open space, the boardwalks through the forest, the playground, picnic shelter, trails, seating, drainage elements, all remain consistent with the medium option. So the big change is in the pavilion and the plaza. And here we have some views, again, the same view of the existing from the south and the proposed. There you can see the larger pavilion building on the east side. Here we have the existing view from the north, looking towards Saint Anne. And in this option, we decided to show um an event, a concert event uh happening here. We understood, you know, uh, large events are are a big part of the program for the site. It's uh, this helps to demonstrate the flexibility and event setup and size. This is just one uh configuration out of a large number of possibilities. This is showing a crowd of approximately 4,000 people. The stage or stages could be set up in multiple locations. Here we chose the plaza with Saint Anne Promenade as a backdrop. It could be flipped and have the river as a backdrop um with supporting amenities set up on the plaza. There's a lot of variety here and including events that could utilize both Millennium and Lions Park at the same time. So again, this open space that connects the two parks um help facilitate that movement and event function. We have some food trucks set up on the plaza, display tents, many more could be added. This is just showing an example here. And the next image shows a winter condition of the freeway. Uh, a larger freeway being uh moved over here to Millennium Park. This is about 25% larger than the existing in Lions Park. We felt that the proximity of the freeway to a pavilion building uh made a lot of sense for skate change, uh warming, washrooms, et cetera. There's additional space here within the the loops, obviously, to make this even larger if we wanted. Um, if the pavilion does contain a a leasable space, a commercial entity, then even things like chocolate or hot drinks or snacks are possible. And the plaza can provide supporting amenities like uh movable fire pits, seating, food trucks, other things that can help to activate the site in the winter. So we feel that there's a lot of positives around this location for the freeway. Okay, here is an existing view again towards the children's bridge from in from the south and the proposed. You can see open views out to the bridge and the river, uh, looking across the playground and the lawn. An existing view looking along Red Willow Trail. And the proposed, the open lawn and multiple options for seating and gathering. So bringing uh that activity of the park and the activity that currently occurs on Red Willow Trail. You know, bringing all that together with spots for seating and rest and and people watching. Here's a view of the proposed picnic shelter by the playground, providing additional space for uh gathering and and picnicking. And then a view, again, looking from the lawn out towards the river. And you can see uh River Alley in the in the back background and more opportunities for seating. Okay, now I get to quit and hand it over to Michael to run through some options for the pavilions.
Sure. So uh first we'll talk about the the medium development option for the pavilion. You remember on the small, smaller development option, there was no pavilion. So this is for the medium development option. And this this smaller washroom pavilion has two principal functions. Uh, facing the left uh towards the open lawn are inclusive washrooms. Um, and then also facing to the south would be in a kind of expanded vestibule, facing that south orientation. So the interior space in this pavilion is not quite large enough to host an event. But it does offer a a modest space for refuge from the elements uh off of that washroom uh use. And then uh face uh south off of that uh interior space is a covered patio area. And um and again, that outdoor covered patio area similarly geared to the scale or to everyday use. Um, leisure use rather than uh programming or large scale events. Um, this view shows the relationship of that smaller pavilion to the south plaza, which can be uh activated. And you can see the children's bridge in the background. The next slide. Here's a view of the interior. So you have um an expanded flexible interior vestibule for um for refuge from the elements.
Keep talking, we're just trying to figure out what the meaning is.
Yeah, no problem. Um, and the uh, this this shows the kind of it in its context from the lawn. You you see how it'd be easy to locate from all different uh locations in the park.
The tree is beeping. I don't know what it is.
And it's not, it's not a power shelf.
All right, the last, the last view there, is it easy to go back? This is uh speaking to one of the previous comments, we heard this is the view kind of towards the river where the the pavilion really is centrally located with views all around it, so it's easy to locate within the water. The next um, the next pavilion we'll talk about is the the high development options. The the scale of this pavilion is consistent with the 2018 placemaking concept and engagement. And um this is an expanded pavilion design along that same scale. And it's designed to support um hosts of activities, a broader range of activities, including rentable use and large scale event use. Here, the interior space, which you can see in the blue, um, it's large enough to host an indoor event with large doors that open to that south plaza. Uh, so the space from the interior event could spill out into a larger covered outdoor space. Um, the indoor space is also large enough on this option to support skate change.
Support what, sorry?
Skate change in the winter for the skating. Um, on the right hand side, you can see in yellow are uh leasable spaces that face in Anne Prominades to support commercial activation. The indoor space that I just mentioned can also serve that uh leasable cafe space. So so the businesses can host patrons and operate year round. Um, yeah, maybe the next slide, please. Oh, sorry, could you just orient me wherever the splash pad would be on that? Yeah. So. Uh, do I, this is later work, oh, here we are. So uh, this is the outdoor covered area, which you're just about to see. And then the splash pad is kind of in the plaza in this location to the south.
With an angular building, it's kind of hard to.
Yeah, these these plans are oriented pure north, uh, it gives you better sense.
Yep.
So if the next view shows that relationship to the to the splash pad, you can actually see uh here um, some uh indications of what that relationship could look like. So a strong orientation towards south. Um, south plaza and the and the solar exposure that comes with that. And then a ban shell like roof that can host outdoor functions uh or support large events with some uh with some coverage from the elements. Next slide. This is the interior of that uh space. It's meant to be transparent and open, so it feels like an extension of the park space. Uh, this can be used for day to day use and smaller events, or as the indoor support for wider outdoor um events. This is the space that can also be used as a skate change space for during skating, winter use. Uh, the next view, please. Here's um the view from the park lawn. So you can see the variety of spaces that support park use, outdoor, indoor, and then accessible washrooms. And then the next view, please. And here's the view, pardon me, the street facing exposure towards Saint uh Saint Anne Promenade with the commercial activation both uh inside and outside the building. Uh, the pavilion, uh, this pavilion becomes a real gateway to the park, tying the energy of downtown to the views, to the river beyond. And all of these spaces that you see, be they indoor or outdoor, would be designed to be inclusive and barrier free, so they'd be accessible to all.
Council Brmaski?
I just had the one question, it was mentioned that, you know, indoor events could be hosted. What would be the number of people you could have in that area?
Uh, I think that that area could probably very, very comfortably hold 100 people.
Okay, so what kind of events are you thinking of, like you said, big events?
Do weddings, that's for a couple, like maybe a community recognition event or something of a small nature, a small little um intimate concert or something of that nature that maybe would align with cultural services, some of those kinds of things, much smaller scale.
Okay, thanks, I just heard big events, so I was confused, so thank you.
Think we're more looking to line the big events to the outdoor spaces, but see this as kind of a natural tie into those two.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly a supportive space to the indoor events, be it holding a reception or hoarding off pieces for storage or for staging and that kind of thing. So being flexible, so in day to day use, having indoor refuge and a community gathering space, but also during the event times, being able to use it quite flexibly for a number of things.
Council of the Park?
Of our, yeah, yeah.
Um, is that the end of the presentation?
One more slide.
I just have a couple of. If that's okay, uh, so just um to give you an overview on of the the options that we shared with you today. Um, for the pavilion building, um, there's no shade shelter, shades shelter, which is incredibly difficult to say. Um, uh, with no permanent washrooms in Millennium Park, again, that would lead to retaining the ones in Lions or replacing the ones in Lions. Um, we are proposing a freeway in the low development option. We really see some benefit in even having two locations for a freeway. It's hard on our turf, so being able to use both sites flexibly or permanently moving it would be good. Um, the tree loss on the low development option is approximately 39%. It's about 2% higher than the 2018 placemaking concept, so it's it's pretty much in line. Um, with that, the open lawn area is approximately 7,700 square meters. The plaza space is quite a bit smaller in this option at about 1,800 square meters. Um, and the cost with, I will say, a 50% contingency, um, is nine and a half million for the low development option. The medium option has a small pavilion space, approximately 1,600 square feet. As a good point of reference, Kingswood uh Park Pavilion is approximately 1,500. It's very similar, um, it has a freeway as well as the play area. It does not have the water feature in it. It does require approximately 56% tree loss on the site to get those open views that we were looking for. It does increase the open lawn space by about 1,000 square meters, so approximately eight, eight, 700. Uh, the plaza is quite a bit larger in the medium option. I will note your package did say 4,000, and as designers and planners, we can't help but tweak tweak again it. So we've reduced that down to about 2,600, so apologies, that is different than your package. Um, and the cost for this option is 13.8 million. And the high development option, again, mirroring that original 2018 placemaking concept, is approximately 4,200 square feet of indoor space with a number of components. Outdoor, it has water play, freeway and/or social ice, trying to maintain that um continuity between the original 2018 concept and these new ones. Uh, we have introduced the play area into the medium and high options. Same tree loss would be proposed in medium and high, um, leading to the same amount of open lawn space. You'll see the plaza is again uh still yet larger at approximately 3,500 square meters uh with a cost of approximately 16.6 million for the high development option. But at this point, our um process for next steps uh would be to bring it back all three cons- concept options to council for decision. Um, once council has selected a development option, um, we would bring forward a boring bylaw uh for the selected option only. So our recommendation today is that the Standing Committee of the whole refer the Millennium Park Concept Plan Options to council for decision in Q1 of 2024. Um, as you will note in your package, alternatives are shared with you to consider today or in future. Um, with that, our presentation is done. Um, our project team, uh, including all of our support staff are here to answer any questions you may have.
Awesome, okay, so uh. Yeah, so if there's some sort of indication from my colleagues of support for one option, I'll maybe push for that decision we made today. If not, it's January 9th, so it's either today or the night, guys. So so those are your last, this is your last kick at it, um, because the boring bylaws coming on the, we, the, okay. And they need obviously to know which option before they prepare the boring bylaw. Um, my second comment is, uh, thank you. All three options achieved, I think what both Mike and I were always looking for is that connection to the river. We gotta, gotta take advantage of the fact that we have this beautiful river in our city. And those that are traveling along the river will now be able to see into the park. And those that are going along the promenade or doing something in the park will be able to see the river. And I think that's, I'm like, so happy with all three of those um options. My only quick question is, and I'll open up to council, um, there was no play feature, like play structure in the original. Why did we introduce it into um these concepts? Because I don't see the need for it when there's a fairly decent one over at Lions Park. So where did that come from?
Um, so I can start and I'll ask Kevin and officially James to jump in. Um, we started exploring the idea of play when we started playing with where washrooms would go um, and what made the most sense. Um, and we also talked a lot about how does the park get activated, not when it's day to day, or not when it's an event, but day to day. So we felt like providing multiple play opportunities, and it doesn't have to be a playground, it could be a play area, it could be um, a variety of kind of features that are more geared geared towards children. It provides that flow of families through the site so that they're moving through the site and using the whole space. So starting in Lions, but actually moving into Millennium and flowing back and forth. So we felt like the continuity of play would support day to day use. It brings play closer to this, the proposed spray area if the high development option were selected. Um, so it really just came with that idea of when it's not being programmed for events, how do we improve flow? How do we attract people to stay there for a long time? How do we get people really engaged and active in that space? Because that really helps make vibrant downtowns, bring people as many times of the day, as many times of the year as possible. So that's kind of the the genesis of the idea. It's certainly, you can see in the low development option, it could be removed um, even in any of the options, but we felt it was really important to provide that continuity, not just of trails, but of play as well. Kevin, did you want to?
No, I don't think I need.
Well done.
Okay, it it's still, the 16.6 is still, you know, within range of what we originally talked about, within range of what Wes has suggested for worry about. I'm fine with that, I'm just curious about it. And I think that what you said about making it a different kind of place for that, instead of just scramble gyms or whatever, like, so that kids have choice? Yeah, that's cool, I like that idea.
As you work through design, and this is, this is very conceptual, but as you work through design and get that more finite and more um streamlined, then it could be. streamlined, then it could be a very different experience, but a play experience, I think what they were looking for, so.
Yeah, sorry, I do have something. I can never keep it quiet for that long. Um, especially given the context of the site, like uh with the existing forested area, the relationship to the river, there's some companies and providers out there that are doing really unique play opportunities with materials or the way the features are designed, that could help to tell that story about the history of the site, what the kind of key thematic character of the site is with that forested area and the river again. So yeah, there's opportunities to do more than just provide play, but uh do some storytelling as well and help to express the the real true character of the site through play and those elements.
I know everyone's excited. Wes, go ahead.
Yep. Just uh, so you're you're gonna build the pavilion uh in the medium option, it would have indoor washrooms, and the high uh option would have indoor washrooms, both the same size?
Number stalls?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's uh the the larger one had slightly more stalls, but it it that's something that could be investigated as we move.
So so my question to you is, if we have a four thousand uh person, you know, event, I, how does how does code? What kind of code do you have to manage there?
For the big festivals, Children's Fest, you know, the big, big ones, temporary washrooms will still be needed. The plaza really supports that, so we don't have to worry about spillage or delivery or anything like that, but for the big events, um, it's it's almost impossible to provide washrooms that are financially sustainable and suit those huge events that are only gonna happen, you know, a handful of times a year. So we're kind of find that good balance. It has more washroom stalls in in both options than Lions currently provides.
Sure.
Um, but it's still portable infrastructure is gonna be necessary for the biggest bigger pieces.
Okay.
And I think these plans line us up to have places that will um save our turf and and really protect that while we can still provide those accessible um amenities for those big events.
Okay. Uh, indoor space, I I I think I saw seven hundred square feet for the medium, and then what what is the second one? Seven hundred square feet, probably the size of this room.
Yeah, so in the in the medium option, it's quite small. It's meant for a couple picnic tables, guest, it can change that kind of thing. In the high development option, the flexible space is significantly more.
But twice the size.
Kind of find the right job, trying.
It's also in a consolidated form that's more useful.
Hundred and forty two.
Yeah, no, enough. The uh, one of the principles or opportunities, I guess, indigenous and Maytee history. Um, how's that played?
Uh, so I'll start and I'll invite my colleague Trevor Dooley to jump in if he he so chooses. Um, we have started conversations with our Indigenous Relations Coordinator. Uh, this site being obviously across from the Mission Neighborhood and along the Sturgeon River potentially has both the potential for historic resources, but also cultural significance. Um, so we've started conversations about how we want to work with our Indigenous partners to bring some of those components into the site, be that through and I'm throwing things out, we need to work with our partners to really define that, but could be part uh public art or integrated public art. It could be material choice, plant material, um play features even. Um, there's lots of opportunity that we see as a project team, and we are starting to explore um how we want to approach our partners and how to move that forward. Um, it's a little bit easier once you have a kind of a more concrete idea of what what we're going forward with. Um, but Trevor, did you wanna jump in on that?
No, I think that was a great answer.
That's my question, thanks.
I, yeah, um, what what's the concept here? I I like that it's being leveled out, number one. I think that makes it more universally accessible. Question was on one of the pictures you showed looking from the Children's Bridge toward City Hall, and it looked like it was leveled towards the river. Uh, is that? That's a. Your picture or?
Yeah, that's the limitations of our software and modeling time. No, we aren't proposing to touch anything on the north side of Red Willow Trail, so the the riverbank is being left as is, and it's much love, current efficient.
That's that's great. Um, the uh uh, just as an observation, St. Albert has always had a very curvilinear nature, design to just about everything, that's starting from the building we're sitting in and all of our trails, even our roads, et cetera. This is very angular, and it just wondered what the the comment around that would be and.
Yeah, so I'll I'll start and um we have some really strong architectural opinions on this, um, but um I just would suggest this is concept. We're working with angular lines right now at a very high level. That doesn't mean that's what's going to stay. It's sometimes where you start from. Uh, but our designers have strong thought into why that might be a good idea to retain, but it certainly doesn't, it won't necessarily look like straight lines in that connection at the very end of it. Do you wanna speak to?
Yeah, there's always room to to flex it, but our initial organization of the site was really focused on patterns of movement throughout the site, so the desire lines of people hitting the park in one corner and wanting to go across the other way, so people, it's human nature, point A to point B in the shortest route possible, uh, so we really struck those lines quite um literally and uh trying to appreciate how people are actually going to move. And then uh we were influenced by the uh historic river lot system as well, and those long linear lots that are oriented to the river and how that was juxtaposed by the the township grid system. There's a map um kind of hidden in the the presentation, but we felt that that was uh interesting and uh just visually and provided some reference, you know, maybe that the way the the land was organized was always in a really linear fashion, and so it doesn't make sense to reference that through through the design. Um, and then not wanting to replicate or attempt to replicate something as iconic as the building we're in today with the really curvilinear forms, you know, is doing something that's dramatically different uh more appropriate than trying to tie into something that was done so masterfully back in the day.
You you didn't sell me. Absolutely honest, I know. I I like, you know, what we have done in over the years of trying to have that meandering flow, and I I would say the meandering flow of the river and any many examples where that works really well, um, but that that's just my you know, personal observation. Um, the the other question, it it you brought the point up about direct line of of traffic, people go the the path of least resistance. And the question would be from Children's Bridge over to the plaza with no uh designated walkway? I'm I'm afraid that that would become a worn path in any case. And then it becomes muddy and whatever, and and we we lose that strong sightline on the plaza uh to the Children's Bridge and that's, but again, that's a small.
That provides, because it's actually a large part of conversation in this, and originally it stayed as a central connection. Um, and there's definitely some benefits to that. Um, you'll see in all of the options that the views, regardless of pathway or not, are going to be much clearer to the to the uh Children's Bridge. Um, but the reason we actually took it out is that idea of events, and when you have a pathway that has to be either cordoned off so that people aren't trying to like cut through the middle of a something active going on in the open lawn, um. Or are people gonna naturally kind of split to either side of the pathway, and that becomes a bit of a dead zone uh when you're trying to program it, um, because it's people are gonna bikes are gonna be moving through. Um, and when you're kicking a soccer ball was the best kind of example we talked about, are you gonna stay to one side of the park or the other? And so it kind of allows for a better flow and a bigger open lawn that is uninterrupted for those big events. So that's kind of why, but we we definitely debated it a lot. Certainly not a small thing, and really um was a really strong point of conversation. Um, but that's kind of some of the the design rationale why we remove it. It could come back in at later stages of design for sure. It's not a, it's not an absolute no. Um, but that's kind of the genesis of that open lawn concept, just trying to provide as much contiguous open space as possible.
And there were some ways we can encourage public to stay on the trails around, so through plantings and other things that don't um inhibit sightlines, but maybe encourage people to stay on pathways instead of cutting across grassy areas, which, I mean, people logically do, but they can still walk on the grass, but if you see some sightlines coming that way, we can also manage it.
Um, the the other, uh, yeah, okay, uh, I I like the linkage to Saint Anne. I I think that's great. I although the in Orient, the pavilion orientation seemed a little bit weird when I first saw it in the map. Now that I see how it functions with Saint Anne and sightlines and the little splash park, uh, kind of all all make sense. The 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 one other big question is one of our largest events is Rock in August. And it's a huge economic factor to first Saint Albert, it's all week long and lots of vehicles uh use this. Could, would this still be able to accommodate um Rock in August and and uh you know, accommodate vehicle parking on the grass and all those other kind of good things with it?
Maybe I'll speak and then Danielle.
Yes, you go ahead.
Um, yeah, absolutely. This is providing more space. Um, we are providing more hard surface to kind of deal with some of the more um like food trucks have grease and things like that, so we'd encourage as much vehicle use to stay on the plaza as possible. But we understand there are events and for the once a year kind of things, it certainly would be able to manage that. Um, and be designed to allow pathways so that they're not driving too far on the grass. They can use um the multi-use pathway and things like that. So it certainly could accommodate it. Like I said, we just encourage for as many events as we can, the hard surface plaza is gonna take some of that wear and tear off the turf. But for some of those events that we need to expand via vehicles or heavier pieces, it is accommod- it does accommodate that.
Another thing it allows us to do is branch onto the promenade too, so we can use the promenade a little bit differently, so there's ways we can work with our event organizers as we work through design to re-explore some of these spaces or how they currently host, and maybe there's a different way to reconfigure them staying in that downtown area, but um use those hardscape spaces, roadways and such a little bit differently.
Yeah.
As we move forward too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, a technical consideration that we're already thinking about, though it's not part of the scope is uh building the new lawn in such a way that it better withstands the activity and uses that are planned there.
Like artificial turf.
No, I didn't say that.
Biologist.
So you know, older lawns were developed with uh shallower depths of soil, heavier, maybe clay type soil, so we're look, we would look at a deeper soil volume of the right soil mixture so that it better withstands compaction. Hopefully that'll help for the freeway impacts. Uh, large events and concerts, just foot traffic and make the lawn area more resilient than what a traditional construction methodology would be. But that's down the road.
Over with what?
Over.
One one addition to the to the conversation here, so recognizing whatever option votes for is gonna change the way that we can host events in the in the downtown area, so looking at our existing events, maybe attracting a new event, so a future phase of work, uh, after we've kind of got a a concept that we're moving forward with is to engage with those event stakeholders to see how their their bets can can fit within the proposed new landscapes.
And where where do the beer tents go?
Yeah, I saw, when you said one of the biggest users, I was also thinking of the opportunities, especially with that amphitheater and that picture for the high impact for the Children's Fest.
Yeah.
Like the culture department's gonna go crazy.
Well, I was supporting this work, yeah.
And I would say this has been a really collaborative project team with representatives from across the organization, so planning and development, our capital projects office, public operations, uh, community services, really um participating in the design. We haven't gone to external um review our stakeholders yet, but it's been really with a lot of um knowledge and depth from our internal staff.
And uh just final comment, I don't think we ever discussed forest and boardwalks um in previous versions, but it it's a great idea, great addition. Um, boardwalks keeps, you know, foot traffic off of the natural environment, and yet it still allows it to be enjoyed, so um if we're gonna preserve those trees, it's nice to see an idea that will allow them to be be actually enjoyed by the public, so um, that that I noticed was a new addition that I think actually, you know, totally makes sense, so good, good to see.
Awesome. Okay, um, Counselor McKay, then Counselor Hughes, and then we'll start the second round with Counselor Vermansky. Go ahead, Ken.
Well, I thought Shelly had her hand up first.
She, I think she has some questions, so I'll go to you and then we'll do second round for sure, yeah.
Okay, um, I I guess if we're looking at um the high option or the high development option, pardon me. I mean, that uh inclu- involves events. Um, have we done parking, or when would parking studies be looked at there? Because I mean, obviously, we're gonna there's gonna be an increase in traffic, even if you're gonna try and say park where there's the now parking across from Saint Albert Place, but what about what about other parking studies?
Uh, so maybe I'll ask uh invite Adrian to kind of speak to the downtown parking situation. Um, when we started this project, um realistically to provide event space and parking both on the same site wasn't at all feasible. Um, so we built in kind of the assumption that um parking rides and things like that for those large scale events would be somewhat necessary. Um, but I'll ask Adrian, um, the planning has been supporting us in understanding parks in downtown.
Yeah, so uh I guess I'll just say that uh planning and development has been doing biannual every two years. Um, parking studies in the downtown since twenty fourteen, I wanna say. Um, and that those studies typically show that for all of our normal use, we don't have a parking shortage issue. And for events, um, you will never have enough parking unless you go to some sort of vertical parking structure, or you use um off-site parking locations and buses and so forth, so I I guess from from that perspective, um I I think that the downtown just functions as it is. You get ten thousand people that come into downtown Saint Albert every Saturday for Farmer's Market, and it generally functions. Um, if you have big events, then we're just gonna have to figure out from an operational perspective how to make it work.
Okay, I I just thought we should raise raise that. I mean, I mean, it's an obvious question in case you know, as we start to, but you're you're right, we we do have parking downtown. I just um, you know, you you even have the parking over in the Amacon site as well. Um, so um little excited about the freeway opportunity, but I mean, that's natural then, right? It's not artificial, correct?
Uh, correct, Counselor McKay. We would need to look at uh lighting and electrical availability to support the freeway, which is why it's included in um the option, as well as making sure that we have the right type of water access and that kind of thing. So there are some infrastructure impacts. Um, it's not purely operational. Um, but it's the design of it, and that is largely operational. It's just making sure the the background infrastructure is in place.
Yeah, I understand the cost es- escalations if you were to make it artificial, but I mean, at the same time, I mean look at our winter right now, we can't even operate our freeways that we have now. It would be, it'd be a great attraction and a great feature, but um, uh, I understand probably the cost impacts. So I know that that the Lions Park is coming back in about twenty twenty five, according to our background, or but you obviously you've had some looking at synergies in relation to the development of these three options. So um would you be saying that now with the incorporation of the picnic shelter and the, so you're gonna have um almost like picnic areas, like you have similar to Lions Park, or would you maintain the Lions Park picnic areas as standalones? Uh, like, have you guys thought about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So as part of the twenty twenty three budget, I'm looking at my colleagues across the table. Um, there was uh funding approved for conceptual planning for Lions Park. So we've just combined those two projects, so they are being looked at side by side and kind of develop different options based on what happens in Millennium. Um, we are suggesting, based on our structural assessment, that the existing large picnic shelter in Lions be retained. It does need a little bit of just TLC, uh, but it's in really good structural shape. Um, in the medium and high development options, you'll see that secondary shade shelter brought into Millennium. And the reason for that is largely driven by if we remove the washroom building, there's an adjacent picnic shelter or a conjoined one. Uh, so our suggestion in the medium and and high options would be to remove the Lions washroom because of the issues, but still keep that picnic function, that secondary smaller one, but we just bring it into more closer into the Millennium site. Um, so the existing picnic shelter in all options would stay, and then kind of that secondary one depends on what happens with the washroom.
Okay, and then I guess, I guess part of it is is um you are using up that space or opening up that space behind the seniors center. And I mean, I probably, I know that there's opportunities for the seniors to probably partner with this. I, when you uh did your public consultation with the seniors, was what was their feedback? I I know it's in a little bit. I, I know it's in the, a little bit, you alluded to a little bit. I know I, I've been approached by uh representatives of the seniors over some concerns over that la- loss of space that I, I'm not sure if they were looking at it as a revenue or is there synergies that we can build off of on this uh, on this, all three options?
Yeah, certainly. So we've had one preliminary conversation with the St. Albert seniors. I would say that um, there are concerns. Um, they don't, um, they do maintain that space and, and quite meticulously now. There's pollinator gardens, there's a little bit of garden beds back there, um, as well as their deck structure, which we wouldn't propose to impact. Um, as a project team, we've identified really good broad public benefit to opening up that space. Um, and we do feel there is significant opportunity to partner with St. Albert seniors, be it on a programming level or, you know, replacing those gardens, um, or just opening up that space. Um, it's still allowing some type of use um by the seniors association, just not exclusive use necessarily. Um, but we do recommend that we just continue those conversations. I will say that none of the concepts are completely reliant on changing that lease. Um, it does obviously reduce the amount of publicly available open space if we don't um have a little bit of that space open to the public. Um, but we just want to keep, continue to have those conversations with the seniors and find those shared opportunities. I will say they were certainly open to that. They even brought up concepts of adjoining the pavilion building or expanding red willows, which would require a lot of a lot of discussion and structural engineering work to, to see if that was even feasible. Um, but certainly they indicated a desire to open up their physical public, its youth and um find more kind of broader public uses for that space as well. So we see a lot of opportunity, kind of very long story short.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's good. I, I, I just see opportunities where we can actually work together and potentially uh, build, build off of the programming, but also build off of opportunities so that the seniors can be involved and also be able to use the space in their, in even an expanded way. Um, and then Mike took my uh one question in relation to angles first.
Hold on one sec. Back to the seniors, is there some development that they've done on the back of their building that now is going to be lost?
So they have done a little bit of irrigation um back there for that lawn area and there's
Clear system?
Yeah, and there's a small um garden area. Um, with the changes to the side building, we feel like there's lots of opportunity to replace that lost value and potentially enhance it um as well. Either within the landscaping of the site or within their leased area to the side yard or some you know, lots of opportunity to kind of take the values that they have there and keep them on site, but not necessarily in an exclusive way or maybe even an exclusive way, but within different areas of their lease space.
It's feel like, because of course they've reached out. They, 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 then they weren't happy when I, I talked to them. Um, they, they, they were looking at opportunities for revenue generation, I think, off, off of the back there with their deck and irrigation and
Yeah, so they did share
Unbolling, but they would host events and charge for it, so.
Yeah, at an aspirational level, that's kind of where they were hoping to go. We're not aware from a city perspective within their lease of any development plans or anything, but they did share with us they might want to expand their deck, they're looking at wedding rentals or things like that. Um, it's not something, I think it's still a very much a concept similar to this, this plan. So we did want to continue those conversations and understand values and opportunities on, from their perspective and kind of their plans. Um, because it's very anecdotal and kind of high level in our first meeting with them.
I think we just really need to stress that this is a city-owned building and it's a public space and the most people will get used out of this concept and and then leasing it out to their private parties and stuff, so.
Uh, that was going to be my only interjection is, you know, I, it's important to work collaboratively, but they are tenants in a city-owned building. So there, there's that component to be good.
And I think it's a value these parts and we want to work with them to a common solution. That's kind of our goal. And this is, is, is there an opportunity to work to a common goal, but I think there's opportunity that they kept, wanted to keep the door open to conversations, so.
Yeah, yeah, we want them to be sustainable and generate as much revenue as they can for their operations. So if that's all still on the table, then that's good. And keep going. I apologize for interrupting, but it was on the same lines.
No, no, sorry. It's just hard when you're away. Uh, and I, I was just going to make the last one, just a comment. I mean, I didn't really, I, I'm not really attracted to the flying W kind of look of the building and I like kind of Mike's kind of idea around maybe making a little bit more curve, but I realized that, that this time we're not getting into the details, so. Just a comment.
Councillor Hughes. Thanks. So I had a question with um, the sign option one. Why is it costing nine point five million if there's not even any washrooms involved?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start and then I'll invite James Allen and Carson to jump in as well. A lot of the costs, um, obviously are involved in servicing the state because there are no servicing, electrical, there's, there's nothing accessible to the site at this point. Um, and a large part of the cost comes from the tree removal as well as the regrading of the site to bring it nice at levels that we can have that open lawn area. So a lot of the, the funds required for any of the options are really in that underground and bringing that um surface up. But maybe I'll ask uh James under Carson to, to speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, I know you hit it. The, the main cost for the, the utilities, tree removal and the grading, you know, Kevin talked about the site coming up. You have to get that level plane between St. Anne and um, and, and the Red, Red Bill of Trail. So those, those are the main costs for sure. And then, you know, once you get into, you know, plaza, the amenities, all of those bring, you know, your, your overall cost. And just to finally add, so that, that nine point five, now you're seeing all the costs, that's all inclusive. So that includes uh engineering, detailed design, any permitting costs, construction administration. So that's an all-in cost. So for, for instance, that nine point five right now, we're showing a load of five point five link construction plus or minus fifty percent contingency plus engineering and all that good stuff. So it's an all-in inclusive cost for the entire project from start to finish.
So in the previous design, we didn't fill in this um low point. So why was it decided that we should fill in the low point for all options going forward?
I, I can speak a little bit to that. Um, and really to respond to this idea of creating this big open space and views to the river. The difference engraved, um, I believe is at, at most one point two meters, which is a fairly substantial dip down. When you're trying to open up, it's an open up lawn. Um, that makes it really hard and it's constrained to where the existing kind of topography lies if we don't fill. Um, so we get really constrained by the, the natural slopes of the site in terms of creating that big open space. It becomes very, very difficult. So when we regrade it, it's, we make sure that the water doesn't pool, um it flows naturally across towards the river and it gives us a lot more opportunity for that mobile space as opposed to just responding to the nav conditions. May my team want to add to that?
I just think that if we can go back to the principles behind which council gave us and the priorities that were um asked to do the redesign was improving the flow, the viewscapes and the open space provided for event provision and community gatherings. So in alignment with those kind of directions, that was really the purpose was to flatten the space out, provide that um, event hosting kind of opportunity as well as the sightlines.
Okay, so um, when we discussed this last year, I don't even know, earlier this year. Um, we were told that we were going to have to have the pavilion on the opposite side of where it's currently located and that's where we are planning to put the utilities and all of that, and that that part really wouldn't be flexible, but now it's on the other side of the park. So can you just help me understand why we moved it then? And why we can, because you told me we couldn't?
Apologies councillor Hughes, I don't recall saying that we couldn't move the pavilion, only that we were going to remain as true to the original concept as we could, uh, while still meeting those three end goals. So when we reassess the site, obviously as you move away from the river, the soils get a little bit better, the grade gets a little bit better, you get better visibility and movement of people from the streetscape. Um, so apologies, I'm not, I don't recall that, but that's kind of, we took a really hard run at maintaining the spirit of the original concept, um, but really where it makes the most sense with the direction given by council.
But I think, I do recall, you know, the question was asked and, and it was based on maintaining proximity, I believe, to the promenade for service, right?
Yeah, so we put
Moving it further away was non-sustainable or would have cost a significant amount of money to your point councillor Hughes, right? Um, I, I think, but in this case, it's, it's shifted along the promenade, but still in proximity. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but that's still maintained. It doesn't have any significant impact in servicing.
No, this does make it, as Kevin spoke to, it is actually easier to service. And again councillor Hughes, part of this has been learning a lot more about the site and doing more of those detailed investigations to what is. Um, so we were able to really take a really hard look at where can we maximize our investment in terms of placement and flow and deliveries and um, there was a lot of considerations that went into bringing that building and we, I think we moved it three or four times through this. Um, kind of where we've landed in terms of most efficient, most effective. Um, but um, still maintaining that reduced cost and looking at really detailed servicing information as much as we could.
Okay, I just remember you guys said this is the diagonal, we have to put utilities here, we're continuing with utilities line and this, no matter what the designs are, and then it's moved. So the question I had also about the Lions Park, like the washrooms. So if you were to choose option one, although I, I suspect I already know how this game, like how this is going to end, how the story is going to end today. But if you were to choose option one, then what's the plan for the washrooms for Lions Park? Because you've kind of incorporated the solution for Lions Park into the other two.
Yeah, so in option one, what we propose is to leave the washroom building. It does need either a replacement or a significant upgrade. It's still functional as is. It's not going to fall down or fall in or anything like that. It's more, um, it's in a poor location in the park and it does not meet code, um, current codes. We do need to, to upgrade it at some point. So it would be retained in Lions Park, the washroom building, um, but brought forward as part of that RMR charter for uh twenty-five, twenty-six.
So I look at just the, the logistics of having that washroom removed and then we're moving it to the far end of the other park. Not central towards the two areas and that would be the sole washroom. Like I'm just like, I'm a child, I'm in Lions Park. I have to go a pretty good hike to get to the washroom with this current plan. Um, and the other one will be removed, so that, that option won't even be there. I'm just, was this thought, did you guys consider that, the fact that if you have a toddler, that might as well be in the moon right now? Like I, it seems very far away for a solution. Um, if you have a child that needs to go to the washroom.
Absolutely. So um, and I will invite my team to speak to this, but we did talk about it extensively. I have two children myself. Um, and really it looks far away if you go through the green space. Um, but we did calculate in the last, my consultants, how long it would take to walk from the Lions play area to the pavilion and because you can walk along the street side parking lot and that's part of the planning is how we would move people. Uh, it's actually a pretty short distance, but I'll ask my consultants to speak to that a little bit.
As they're formulating their thoughts, I'll just add in, we do have a porta potty program that we run during summer. Uh, we bring in additional washing facilities, some of our playgrounds, parks around the city. Uh, and we would consider doing similar things uh in Lions Park if it was a medium or high option to our, or vice versa in millennium, if we wanted a little option to support uh community demand.
Yeah, I don't recall the specific number, but it was in the range of a, between a minute, minute and two minutes, I believe, to walk. Uh, we did discuss the porta potties being a supplement uh in Lions Park. But it's also, I think, important to consider that the the pavilion building is, does more than just provide washrooms. It's providing that flexible space uh for skate change uh for facilitating or supporting outdoor events. And then in the high development option, also the potential for uh, leasable space that might be taken up by uh a commercial opportunity. And so that also influenced the locating of the building close to St. Anne Promenade where there's close access to parking and drop off and servicing, et cetera. So uh, the washroom buildings, the washrooms are a, are a key component of the pavilion, but the location was informed by more than just the, the washing element.
Yeah, I know. It's just that if we remove this, we're creating problems for families. The two minutes was an adult walking or walking with a toddler? Like, who was walking?
We didn't do a detailed study to that.
Yeah, I'm just saying if you're walking with somebody with really short legs, it doesn't take two minutes. That's it for questions for now. Councillor Bermansky.
Thank you. I had one question that was mentioned in the third option of putting office space in, in the pavilion building. What kind of office space are you considering there?
Uh, we were just considering administrative space, so whether it's just a desk for whoever's using the space or event holders often need just some flat surface to put themselves in to to be organized and have cash flows or, I, you know, I'm kind of spitballing here a little bit, but just that flexibility to have a, a space that people can just literally touch down and have a flat surface to write on. Um, our staff often just need a, a desk or something as they're doing maintenance on the site just to you know, take a note or that kind of thing. So it's not in a, a dedicated office, but it is just space as a touchdown space for staff or for event holders. Um, to be able to kind of do the administrative tasks with events or site management.
Okay, and could you explain the storage items you'd be storing in there?
Yeah, certainly. One of the things that we've heard from our partners um in our own uh event staff is oftentimes when larger events want to come in, they want to come in and store for a day or two. They want to load in over a day or two or up to a week. I think children's TGS takes ten days or so. Um, so they need somewhere to just put things that is lockable and, and safe from the elements. So that was really event-driven. It's not really city. Um, city needs necessarily, although we could also store things like programming supplies and that kind of stuff. Um, but really came through from our band staff is having the ability to just bring stuff over time instead of having to load in and load out in a very short period of time is really beneficial to attracting some of those events. Um, and, you know, making it a really functional space for them.
A good for instance for you councillor Bermansky is before Canada Day, we need places to have signage, tables, um, sometimes pop-up tents, that kind of thing for a couple of days before. So it just allows us to prepare and, and other events of that nature.
Rental items.
That would be with the washrooms then, is what you're saying, in the same space essentially.
Same building, yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, the more I hear about the building, the less thrilled I get about it, but it's, it's very small, like a hundred people is uh not very much, right? And um, and the commercial, so I had the other question, it said it could be leased for commercial. So what commercial space would you have that wouldn't take completely all the people's space?
Yeah, so if you look at the, um, and I'll, I apologize, we can share the diagram, which is probably useful at this point in conversation. Um, we have um carried over from the original twenty eighteen concept plan, the idea of leaseable space. Um, so this is a continuation of the conversations that started in, in twenty seventeen. Um, but envisioning something like a small cafe, um, Free Bananas comes to mind and it's serviced in Churchill or they were there for a while. A small cafe space, the original concept plan had a like semi-commercial kitchen, which could be used by a leaseholder or by event holders, you know, for concessions and things like that. Um, but I'll just share my screen. Um, these spaces are currently shown as spaces separate from the public space. Sorry, I'm not very fast. Apologies.
Another example could be like at Woodlands Water Play Park where we have a, a concession stand, just where we have people that want to buy, you know, a a frosty or a, um, a slurpee or they want to grab some water. It's just an opportunity and a lot of um usage of those kinds of amenities gets utilized when it's hot days, cold days, et cetera. So I think that's what we were thinking of.
And really, really driving um non-city activation of the space as well. So bringing in a commercial operator to give some life to the space, give a purpose and a destination within the park, um, that doesn't necessarily come at a cost to the city, um, but adds to the activation, um and the reasons why people would want to come to the space. Um, but again, this is carryover from the twenty eighteen and we do need to do quite a bit more work to determine you know, if this is going to be an attractive space, if it's the right size, the right location, that kind of thing. Um, so we've even, you know, thrown around the idea of Wares is a great space, but um, DART shows parts of millennium is culturally focused, so could Wares come out into this space? That'd be a good fit, things like that. So I think there's lots of opportunity and, but still a lot of questions to be asked, work to be done. Um, and this is really just trying for that twenty eighteen footprint in a different way. Um, but it is kind of separate, it's the yellow that you see. So a lease space and kitchen, um, and then the blue space would be the public, the accessible space. So it doesn't it doesn't take away from that. It could be added into the public space if you didn't want the leasable space. Um, but again, looking towards that um activation and potential revenue generation as well.
So if you went with option one, like you'd still have the covered area, so so any of these small type like, um, you know, concession type vendors could set up there as well. And could the big event be sort of achieved without the pavilion? I believe everything that you would need to do, any kind of event would be achievable without it, right? Other than the washrooms that were just at a different location.
Yeah, so when we've assessed this and we looked at it, um, what we felt was our low development option, um, would do it would be strongest in supporting our existing event holders. Um, so it does a really good job of dealing with some of the concerns that we've had following, um, kind of leading into the direction of council in terms of viewscapes and open lawn and, and supporting those. Um, we're not at this point and very, very early in investigation, sure how much it will attract new or bigger events necessarily, because they do require more supporting infrastructure, but a building kind of does help with. Um, but all three options can support large-scale events, absolutely. And that was kind of the intent.
I think the difference between the pavilion, like a building and just a shade shelter is that you'd be looking at more of a drop-in service or if we had a shade shelter where we had food trucks and the like, you wouldn't have a permanently you'd be looking at more of a drop-in service, or if we had a shade shelter where we had food trucks and the like, you wouldn't have a permanently housed, um, more kind of a leaseholder like we would expect in the high-end option, which is the difference, and really the alignment to Dart was to that, provide that least opportunity.
Right, but you would have more option to the setup of the grounds area if there wasn't a building in there as well, right?
Uh, we are proposing that the plaza be smaller as well in the low development option, that doesn't have to be true, um, but we're not taking away plaza space to put a building in, we've expanded the plaza to put the, the larger building in, if that makes sense.
Okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Hey, anyone else have questions? Can I call a, uh, ten-minute bio break?
Bio break.
Um, for two reasons, there's a grade six class in chambers right now. And uh, Council Jolly had to step out, and she said if there was a vote, she wanted to be her, so she'll be back at two thirty, so, ten minutes.
Yeah, it's eleven minutes.
We're going to have to leave at two forty, so.
So.
Yeah.
Oh, somebody bumped it with my actual car.
Hilarious.
Oh.
Your alarm's gone off. Oh geez.
Full time?
It's really annoying for me, right?
Yeah.
Surprised it worked.
Okay, we have, we have like a ten-minute window because Council Jolly's back, but Council Bromansky has to leave. So I think I have two cancers. I'm not sure which one of you wants to forward a motion. Um, and then I'm going to call the vote before two forty. So Council Bromansky has that opportunity. So let's keep bait to like one minute each if you guys can do it. Uh, who's making the motion?
I have it.
That admin, that administration proceed with Millennium Park Concept Plan Option High Option. I don't think they're numbered, so it's High Option and prepare an associated borrowing bylaw for council's approval in Q1 2024. Uh, with.
You okay with that?
Yep, ready.
Okay, right. High Development Option, okay. Okay, um, any questions on that real quick? Right, go ahead, Council Kilik.
Yeah, I think we've had great um appreciate administration and the whole team um bringing forward the three options. It was exactly what council had asked previously, so I appreciate that. Um, I think we've had good discussion that shows this is maximizing the use of the site. Uh, clearly listened to our key requests around opening up access to the river um and sightlines and uh and meeting all of our residents uh requirements. So great, great uh option to bring forward.
Great. Anyone else on debate?
Well, me.
Go ahead, Council Broadhead.
Thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Council Kilik for bringing it forward. I believe that uh the High Option uh certainly meets the needs uh to the best extent the council uh defined earlier. Uh, certainly around uh driving activity downtown, large-scale events and connectivity throughout uh the parkways in downtown and connection to the downtown areas. A couple of things that uh that make a lot of sense to me. One is the High One brings the water play area. If you've been over to our other water park in the, in the summer, it's just, it's crazy. Given a second option, I think uh certainly uh meets the need of driving downtown activity. Parents and and children will come to that area for, for that feature alone. And uh the pavilion uh certainly provides not only space for, for business activity and for smaller indoor activity, but also provides that heated uh winter space for, for people to warm up. Because it's not always this nice in the winter. Uh, sometimes it is in fact twenty below and Canadians don't like to skate at twenty below. They just want someplace to warm up. So I think that, that works there too. So I just think it uh is well done. I think the comment about uh, uh, I don't know if I saw the flying W or not, but uh, but they, I was just looking out and our, our trailways are sort of meandering like the width uh, uh, like the river is. And so I heard that that's not out of the question. So this is my vote.
Council, I don't know who came first, but I'll let you, Council Hughes.
Sure, thanks. Um, I won't be supporting this. I know you're probably not shocked, but uh, I just, I look at what you could do with seventeen million dollars and there's a lot of soccer fields we could build. There's a lot of pickleball courts we can build. There's a lot of baseball diamonds that we need to fill um that are not being met. And we don't have that much money that we can continue to put into borrowing. And it's instead of addressing the other community needs, we're building this. Um, we're putting almost six million dollars into basically a washroom with some space around it. So I just, I can't, I can't support this. This was supposed to come forward in 2028. And now it's being fast-tracked into this. And now it's being warped into a project, which is just a very expensive washroom. It's touched the pavilion and in a very inconvenient location for people who are going to be using the Lions Park. So especially for young families. So I just, it, there's so many other things we could do with this money. And we don't have opportunities to borrow because we're using it all up for other things. And yet we're not addressing other core needs. Just so the people who came today, we're not addressing them to build this. So and and honestly, I don't think that the minimum level needs to be nine point five million. I think if we had not filled it in on the minimum level and put a boardwalk there or something else, it could be substantially less. And we would not even be anywhere near discussing this at a ten, fifteen, or sixteen million dollar option. But unfortunately, the minimum came in very, very high, which made the other two look attractive. But the reality is that this is not necessary right now. And with the tax increases to five point five, I'm projecting right now that 2026, those tax increases are going to be over eight between the fire hall and other commitments plus this. And that's going to be very difficult justified to residents. We look forward to what we're doing here when it doesn't even address the community needs of other groups that need to have sports facilities built. So that's it. Thanks.
Council Bromansky.
Thank you. My comments are similar to Council Hughes. Um, we have met even in the um low-level definition of this project. The view, the access to the river, the opening up the area, the ability to have events there. But to double the cost of it, uh, again, for some washrooms in the area, which uh, if you have an event with several thousand people there, won't be functional anyhow. And uh, again, there's many greater priorities. And the one thing we're forgetting in this picture, I mean, we're providing to the public, the open downtown, all that beauty, all the events, but we're not, we're not, we don't have the money to pay for it. So we're providing also a tax increase. So I can't, uh, I can't support this, the high-level um intent on this project. It's just uh too much cost to the public at this time, but we'll see what the public says. Thanks.
Council Jolly.
Thank you. So I'm very supportive of this. When I hear from residents, um, they, they tell me repeatedly that, that when we build for our city, we should do it well. And, and this plan will absolutely do that and bring a lot of vibrancy to our, our downtown uh that I look forward to. Thank you.
Council McKay.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, while I recognize the concerns from Council Bromansky and Council Hughes. I mean, this does align with uh one of our strategic priorities, which is downtown vibrancy. And uh, I mean, this is, when I look at other communities and I look at some of their downtown, what brings them downtown, and it's always about events, activities, and we see our greatest um kind of uh community involvement around our downtown, particularly around our farmer's market or our children's festival or uh our snowflake festival. So I mean, honestly, this just builds on that and it gives us an opportunity to actually grow. Like I, what excites me again is that open space that allows us to potentially move the freeze weight there. And then you can also look at all sorts of uh decorations light up depending on the season, but particularly around Christmas. So uh, I see that in other communities and I see that the draw that that has downtown. And it opens up opportunities. Uh, potentially this will drive some more economic development downtown, whether it's through Amicon moving back in or seeing what we're doing. There's also a partnership with our seniors facility that is um yet to be uh determined, but there's all sorts of possibilities. And I was walking, just, just to add on, and I'm, I'm approaching my minute, I know Madam Mayor. But I was walking downtown and, or down the River Valley, and I was approached by two gentlemen who said that they needed a washroom facility and there needed to be more washroom facilities along the trail, even though they had access to uh St. Albert Place, they had access to Red Willow Place, but they were looking for other washroom developments. So that's another opportunity that, as we move closer to the river. So I, I support uh the, this motion. I recognize the cost, but I think that there's going to be a long-term benefit to our residents.
I have one minute and then I'll. Thank you for those of you that pointed out that this is part of our um strategic priorities, the downtown. And Millennium Park has been seen as a, a driver for, for that activity. Um, I eliminated the low option immediately when I saw there was no bathrooms. That's right. I think we need bathrooms and the more the better. Um, and I wanted to have that water play function like Wes talked about. Because I do see, you know, that getting a lot of use, you know, outside of the big festivals and stuff. It'll be busy all the time. Um, but when you're building something like this, which will be probably quite significant for this council, uh, you don't want to do the half job. You want to, you want to do the best job you can do for your community. And I think this is something that our community is going to be very happy with, with this council for making this decision. Um, and thanks to Diana and her debt strategy, as we retire debt, which we are doing, we, we, it doesn't always add on to the tax because we take away from some of the tax-supported debt. And we're, and we're doing that in the next couple of years as well. And this was the unanimous vote at council to bring out a boring bylaw for this project. And this is cheaper than the boring bylaw even proposed. So I, I, I thought council would be very excited about this concept, but I'm excited about the high development option for sure. So anything to post, Council Kilik?
Uh, yeah, just to, to close, um, thinking of how we grow our community, uh, community long-term to hundred thousand. Um, it fits with that strategy. It fits with our downtown vibrancy strategy. Um, it meets our environmental strategy by keeping our mature tree stands, in fact, opening them up to actual use rather than just a bunch of trees. Um, just after my personal involvement in Snowflake Festival, uh, accessible washroom, super important storage space for materials prior to an event happening so that you can actually load in all the decorations for Santa's sleigh and then have them ready to open up the next day, having a spot available for volunteer coordination. Um, eh, rental space maybe for, you know, hot chocolate or whatever it might be in the winter. Um, and I, I, I think the addition of the uh play structure um just allows that part to be used to throughout the summer as well and, and makes it kind of more usable on a Monday to Friday, I would say, uh, sense rather than on a weekend big, big uh event. The splash park, man, I, I drive by Versailles Park and it's only four little squirts of water. And the, the number one complaint, I, I no disrespect to four little squirts of water, but um number one complaint I hear from, from parents is there's not enough place to park to get their kids there. They, they love it, yeah, in the summertime. So this again could uh, could really serve that need as well. And I'm very happy to hear that it would support some of our existing uh big events like Children's Festival. It can even get bigger and better. And uh, uh, Rock in August can be accommodated, getting bigger and better. So it, it just, you know, ticks off a, a, a lot of really positive boxes. And um, I'm looking forward to seeing the curva literature uh design as, as, as goes forward.
Okay, let's call for a vote. So that is Council Kilik, Broadhead, um, Dolly, and where's, where's McKay? I think he's in favor. See there yet? Okay. And then Council Bromansky and Hughes opposed. Is that correct? So that passes, so we can take this off the agenda for the night and bring a boring bylaw on the 23rd. Sound good? Is there anything else on this? Everyone's happy? I'm happy. I'm honestly super excited about this. This is great. So um, thank you, everyone. This was really kind of a fun fight that we're on. Uh, meetings adjourned. Oh, no, wait, we have to read some stuff into, oh, I remember. Council Kilik has something to read in too, right? Uh, just. Okay, who, who does? Okay, so it was you, Mike.
Uh, that the budget for Project Charter Fire dash zero zero five be increased from sixteen million three hundred and forty-one thousand to nineteen million three hundred and forty-one thousand to be funded from borrowing bylaw twenty slash one, excuse me, bylaw twenty-two slash twenty twenty-one. And that administration use the additional funding to build Fire Hall Number Four using conventional construction methodology. Let this notice of motion be debated on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of council.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, Council Hughes?
Yeah, the, the limitation that quote organization shall be limited to one community events grant per calendar year is removed from the community events grant policy. That's it, thanks.
And Council Jolly.
Thank you. Letch, can you remind me if my IR?
It's the one about um the St. Albert residents who are not entitled to vote be excluded from the code of conduct process.
Okay, so I'm looking to see if there's any reasons why, like legal reasons why we have to do that. That's, that's the answer.
Yes, that's just, okay. Right. Make sure that's it. Pardon? Sure, oh. Okay, just for the public, Council Jolly's exact um IR. Is there provincial or other legal reason why St. Albert residents are not entitled to vote are excluded from founding a plate through the council code of conduct regarding Schedule A and their Schedule A? All right, we'll get that answered and it'll be made public. Uh, anything else? Anyone else have any announcements, notice motion IRs? Any of you?